In the adjustments?
Yes, I move the personal achievement recognition and student achievement and community involvement showcase up. So these young students can go home and do homework. I guess I'm not being funny.
Mr. Fisher, would you like to announce all of our folks?
I will. First of all, we'll start with Boys Cross Country. And we will start with Slate Swagger. Slate was a member of the Boys Cross Country team that was Big Ten individual champion. He was regional champion and finished ninth overall at the state championship which made him an All-State runner.
Could he stand up so we know who he is?
He can actually come up and stand over here and we'll get a photo.
And besides Slate, we have David Hughes, Mitchell Norman, Maddox Prince, Sawyer Swagger, and Carter Holden. And they are coached by Rachel Boone and Corey Burkett.
Mr. Tid, will you take a photo? And is the coaches here? I didn't see them. Okay. Thank you, Rachel. She's the coach. Coach Boone, do you have anything to say?
I'm really proud of the team. We're missing two, one had to work, I wasn't able to be here, but they all worked very hard and they definitely deserved the recognition for their regional championship this year.
And we want to thank you, the students and their parents for all their work.
Yes. Congratulations. It's wonderful. Keep up the good work.
We can do another round.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
We're gonna do that. We'll do them at the end.
Next is the golf team. Golf finished as regional runners-up this year by one stroke and went on to Wheeling to represent Lewis County High School at the state golf tournament. And members include Slate Swagger, Emily Liebarker, Wyatt Burns, Keller Bennett, Tanner Griffith, Hunter Staret, Scott Underwood, Cade Richards, Hayden Taylor, N. Murray, Garrett Friedman, Adam Dinkello, Andrew Liebarker, Macy Ferguson, and Joseph Davison. And their coach is Kenny James.
Okay. Please, please stand up and come on board and get a picture taken.
Kenny, is that the largest golf team you've ever had?
Yes, sir. We had a JV thing this year.
Mr. ...
We had a JV team this year. That's the first time we've had in 18 years.
18 years. It's the first time we've had enough for JV.
It's a true JV.
That's great.
And you finished 18 under, right?
Pardon?
18 under?
Oh, yeah. And then the alarm went off.
Congratulations. It's a lifetime story.
Next, we have boys soccer. And boys soccer won the Region Two Section Two Championship this year and went on to the regional final and faced Grafton who had 11 seniors on their team and we had zero seniors. So we were young compared to who we were playing and they played a hard fought match, lost 2-0. And hopefully we get back there next year and have a different outcome and actually go on to Beckley. So without further ado, the boys soccer team. Landon Taylor, Joey Amon, Jared Flanagan, Kellen Bruffy, Brayden Lips, David Harefield, Keller Bennett, Mitchell Norman, Parker Williams, Xander Carlton, Landon Bush, Brady Smith, Tanner Griffith, Gavin Marsh, Isaac Smith, Cooper Burkhammer, Brayden Helmick, Amric Grandpree, Zane Richards, Leon Cuevas, and Nova Stinger. And I apologize for butchering some of those names.
Come on up, folks. I need to ask Coach James, does he want something to say?
I apologize. And they were coached by Pat Vara and Caitlin Stern.
That's because you left town, right?
You're leaving, I'm sorry.
And coaches, do you have anything you want to share?
Yeah. Just want to thank everybody that supported us, parents, family, extended family, and school staff at LCHS. And these guys that everything came out as to do, which is a lot. And without further notice, I would never tell them this, but please go share this with them. They're just a great group of kids. And I miss them already.
And one thank you he forgot was Dr. Lewis and the Board of Education and Jerry Paul. We did have a pep bus of 11 students that rode to the regional championship game.
And by the way, we were so touched by that. I made sure that myself and a few of the players shook hands with each one of the 11 that came up. Thank you so much. Appreciate that.
And Coach James, I didn't mean for you not to talk. Do you want to have? Please, go ahead.
We appreciate the recognition by the board and the school. We got from the high school office staff, E. D. Fisher, parents, these guys were very hard to get the summer. They gave up a lot of their summer to get where we got this fall. And I know when we left Wheeling, our motto now is not if we can back to state, it's win. And thanks to Kate when she was a state player.
All right. Next is the volleyball team who was back-to-back sectional champions this year. Last year they had the two seed. They got to host a semifinal game and then traveled to Roanoke to play in the championship, which was the first time in the history that they had not played everything at one high school. This year our volleyball team got the one seed, so they hosted the semifinal and got to host the final, beat Roanoke again this year. And they went to Phillip Barber in the regional finals and faced Liberty in the regional finals and fell short. And the members of the volleyball team are Ruby Lips, Channing Carson, and this is right hot off the press. Channing Carson received second-team All-Big Ten Conference. Gracie Pettit, Madison Miller, Adrian Skinner, Emma Hoskins, Cassie Cook, Sarah Burns, Julia Watson, Addison Heath, Courtney Hartley, Carly Foster, Alexis Johnson, Leah Watson, Eliana Stumpf, first-team All-Conference, Audrey Starcher, Faith Heater, Chloe Richards, statistician Lizzie Oldaker, and managers Jana Jordan, Haley Lewis, and Hadley Melton. And the coaches were head coach Julie Oldaker and assistant coach Heather Montgomery.
Do we have any no volleyball?
Then we, they were here and they left. Then we have our two.
Yes. And last but not least, last weekend was a busy weekend because we had regional volleyball at two. And then I left there and drove to Lincoln to watch our girls compete in the regional finals. And from what my memory serves me correct, was the only team that did not fall. So that was a good thing. But they did come home with hardware as regional champs and will now go to Huntington on December 9th and 10th and compete in the state cheer competition. I'd like to invite the board out to Thursday, December 8th. They're doing a cheer night out again. So that way you can watch the routine. And if you can't make it then, I will get the Times email to everybody because we will do another pep rally to give them an opportunity to perform again. For those who don't know, cheer only gets to compete usually one time. That's the regional championship and then move on to state. So we try to give them as many opportunities as we can to compete in front of a crowd. So this year they did cheer night out on Thursday. We had a thues for the school Friday afternoon. And then they went to regionals on Saturday. You went to AB the Saturday before that, correct? What was the name of that competition?
Battle on the Mountain.
Battle on the Mountain. Then they got first place in it as well. So just to give them more opportunities to do their routine in front of people, that's why we do the cheer night out, have the thues pep rally. Mr. Paul came to the last one that we did for the regionals. Thank you for that. I know other people were in meetings and it was a late notice, but I will send another one out to Dr. Lewis so you can get it out to the board members as well so you can come watch the routine before they go to state. And without, sorry, without further ado, Kennedy Southall, Michaela Ferguson, Lauren Carpenter, Carrington Richards, Sidney Slaughter, Jenna Wall, Jaclyn Mullins, Brenly Wilson, Katie Smith, Kiara Weaver, Nora Clem, Lily Garten, Sidney Pearson, April Sherard, Emma Donaldson, Gabrielle Conrad, and Bella Parker. And the head coach is Katie Nichols and assisted by Braylon Hughes.
Come on up. And coaches, do you have anything to say?
Yes, I do. Thank you, first of all, for recognizing us. Sorry, we ran out of practice. We were a little late. As my mom, I pretty much have taken over and been late. But thank you for recognizing us. Thank you for coming to cheer night out. Cheerleading is kind of pushed to the side sometimes, but not here. And really, we're really thankful because we have the support of this whole community. And these kids really went out there and they did it for Lewis County Saturday. That's our whole thing is we want to do it for the community and we hope to bring back something from states here. So thank you. Thank you.
I don't know. I seen two of them. Maybe they, nobody else. They're here. We do Jessica, I don't see Jessica here. Kim is here and isn't. I don't know what happened. I'll check.
Okay. We have some other recognition to do. Dr. Lewis?
Yes. Is Jessica here? Okay. She said she got a, received a Math for Life educator grant award. And these two are here.
Okay.
You want to read them? Kim's here.
Sure. We have Kim Moss and Isabel Cardenas for the National School Psychology Week.
Okay, you want to come up?
Give one to Mr. Bush and give one to Kenny.
And Mr. Tid will take a photo. And do you guys want to talk about your job a little bit?
Well, we have a lot of job roles in Lewis County in particular. And we are happy to serve the county and the district who give us so much support in our schools. And when, every week, every year, one week in November is National School Psychology Awareness Week. And we just like to raise the awareness of mental health in our schools and just supporting our students and all of those members. So we're thankful to all of you for supporting us.
Mr. Paul, is this created?
We can do it, Tom. Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. Thank you for all your work.
All right. Any other agenda adjustments?
Tammy Posey, when she gets to it, she sent me emails. She's not going.
Okay. All right. Then we'll move on to Consider Student Expulsion Hearing Agreement for student 2223B.
I'll make the motion to go into executive session.
All right.
I second it.
So Kenny Lowers requesting executive session to discuss personnel, or I'm sorry, to discuss agenda item. Student expulsion hearing agreement for student 2223B. Davis seconded. Is there any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose nay. Motion carries five zero. The time is 6:18 PM. The folks who will join us in executive session?
Mrs. Nezera, Dustin, Coger, Brian, Fisher, and John Winston. And then everybody else will be excused.
Jessica, turn it off.
Do we send you?
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah.
Did we get everyone's?
Everybody's tab.
Yeah.
What the? Need to collect in return.
I have a pile of errors.
It's behind you, Mr. Holden there.
What's that?
Oh, is that not it?
No.
So let's just return all of them then.
Do I have a motion to come out of executive session?
Make a motion.
Motion by Mike Holden. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Dave Bush. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pos nay. Motion carries five zero. The time is now seven thirty-two P. M. Let the record show that no action was taken in the executive session. To consider and approve the student's rec-- I'm sorry, the superintendent's recommendation for student twenty-two, twenty-three B to be suspended for thirty calendar days and be able to return to school on November the twenty-eighth. Do I have a motion for that?
I'll make a motion.
Kenny has moved. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mike. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pos nay. Motion carries five zero. Next on the agenda, we have academics, the CTE program. I think I've got a--
Email from--
Is that a suspension or expulsion?
After anything over ten days has to be expulsion.
Then I misspoke. So we need to--
Go back.
I'm sorry, go back. Consider and approve the superintendent's recommendation for student expulsion for th-- student twenty-two, twenty-three B, student expulsion for thirty calendar days, return to school on November the twenty-eighth. Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
And a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
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 I'm sorry.
Pos nay?
Can the board provide the reasoning for that suspension?
At this time--
We can, I'll talk to our attorney and we'll get you something, okay?
All right. The CTE business program--
Yes, she can't make it, but Mr. Parks is here, but he can go under me under superintendent update. It's up to you. He's career tech, but it doesn't involve business.
Okay.
So we can move on and wait for superintendent update?
Okay.
Thank you. I'd hate to make you wait, Mr. Parks.
That's all right.
Okay. There were no delegations signed up. Next we have consider and approve Lewis County High School theater trip to New York City, June of two thousand and twenty-three.
It's Mr. There he is. I'm gonna just pass these out to the board members. Thank you, Mr. Segment, for Mr. Holden get one. And here's Adam Gissies, one for his folder. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, I usually try to take a trip every other year to New York for the theater kids, and obviously that's been waylaid for a few years. So we're trying to get back on schedule with that, and prices have gone up. But we've always, you know, gotten our thirty kids, who are parents, and chaperones, and some teachers. I do, it is June first through the sep-- first through the fourth. Kids will be gone by then, but we'll still, teachers will still be in. I know there are some teachers in one of our counselors that has expressed an interest in going, if maybe we can get professional development for that. But the, as always, the down payment is non-refundable, but everything else can be refunded if there was an issue and we had to cancel the trip. So we've already started fundraising. The kids are super excited. But I told them, you know, it has to be approved first, but they've come to me with all kinds of ideas for fundraising and such. We were doing a show on December first, second, and third at the high school, Arson and Old Lakes, which is a classic, and we've been working on that. I have paint on my pants, actually, right now, from painting on the set. So I just hope you guys can, it's always valuable to go. And the nine eleven memorial, I will always put that in there, because I think that's something the kids need to see. Of course, we'll see a Broadway show. Right now, we're looking at Sweetie Todd, which will have Josh Groban in it, so that's exciting. And then I try to do the cost as low as possible. So we always stay in New Jersey, because it's cheaper than staying in New York. So that's pretty much it. I think we'll get to the forty anyway, to make the price seven or nine for students. And of course, we're fundraising to take that down.
And we will have to have Mr. Paul check out the bus service.
Oh.
They, if we use a travel, we, he has to check their records.
Okay, all right.
And all these companies know that.
Okay. That's, that's all I have for you. Come see our show. On the first, second, or third. We're gonna try to tie it in after the Miracle on Main ends at four on Saturday, so we're gonna try to advertise, come, come see Murder and Death after, after the Miracle on Main Street, so. It's a, it's a fun show, so.
Is this as close as you could get? I mean, is there any place like Pittsburgh or someplace else closer?
Not for Broadway, not for the nine eleven museum.
Do I have a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion.
Kenny has moved. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mike. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Pos nay. Motion carries five zero. Thank you, Mr. Patterson.
Thank you.
I'm considering approve the board goals that were set on ten twenty-six of twenty-two. They are typed out in our packet, I believe, on--
Page four.
Page four.
Just wanna make sure we typed them correct.
Is there a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion.
All right, Dave has moved to approve. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Kenny, a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Pos nay. Motion carries five zero. Next is approved minutes from the following board meetings, ten twenty-four of twenty-two, a regular board meeting, and ten twenty-six of twenty-two, a special board meeting, and those are found on pages five through thirteen in our packet. Is there a motion to approve?
Make a motion.
Dave has moved. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Adam. Any discussion, corrections, additions? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pos nay. They're approved five zero. Consent agendas. Use of the building and the grounds. Judy Piercy, City of Weston, use of Robert L. Bland Middle School parking lot and field for the two thousand and twenty-two Christmas parade, November twenty-fifth, two thousand and twenty-two, four thirty P. M. to eight thirty P. M. And second, Deborah K. West, City of Jane Lou, use of Jane Lou Elementary School parking lot for the two thousand and twenty-two Christmas parade, November twenty-seventh, two thousand and twenty-two, one P. M. to five P. M. Now here a motion to approve.
Make a motion.
Mike has moved. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Kenny. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pos nay. Motion carries five zero. Have an out-of-state meeting request. Now, I understand that Tammy Posey is, has withdrawn her request to go. So Cynthia Nesselrode-- the School Nutrition Industry Conference, January fifteenth through the eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-three, San Diego, California. Is there a motion to approve?
Make a motion.
Dave has moved. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Adam. Any discussion?
Yes, is there anything, any closer, Mrs. Nesselrode, to where we don't have to go clear to California?
Well, this is--
And I, and I ask this of everybody.
I'm fine. I was gonna say, this is the industry conference, which I've never gone to. The reason I wanted to go to this one was because it's more about how we're getting the food that we're getting. I normally would go to S and A. Like, S and A is the traditional one that most child nutrition directors go to. That one will be in Florida this summer. I have no intentions to try to go to that in the summer. The S and I C, they do it every year either, there's only one time a year they have, okay? And the reason I wanted to go with it is because it's more about industry, and about how we get what it is, the food and everything. That's what that conference is about. But I have never gone to it before. I just read about it, saw lots of good stuff, and two of the other directors in my co-op are going, and that's, I decided-- two of the other directors in my co-op are going, and that's, I decided that would be the one I would choose, obviously, to pick one.
Any other discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay?
Nay.
Motion carries four to one. Next, we have finance. We have approved the payroll, payment of bills, and the amount of two million, three hundred and sixty thousand, three hundred and sixty dollars and fifty-seven cents. Is there a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion.
There's, Dave has moved. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Kenny has seconded. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed nay? Motion carries five zero. Then we have, I'll ask.
Mrs. Spencer.
Mrs. Spencer to talk to us about budget entries that we need to approve.
I think just an, okay.
Did Dave want to go to?
I think just tell us, just an in general.
Overview.
Overview.
It's, it's this packet here.
It's the.
Right here.
Okay.
And these were, were handed out this evening, Adam. It's, it's journal entries moving from one budget to the correct budget.
We're hearing things in one one.
Oh, okay.
There should be one, yes, should be in this box. There it is.
Basically, the whole packet, we're moving each grant or each revenue source from two thousand and twenty-one to two thousand and twenty-two, and then from two thousand and twenty-two to two thousand and twenty-three to carry over all the expenses, or if we made a budget entry for everything to go to instructional, we have to break it out based on textbooks, personnel, taxes. Usually, we start with a lump sum and then break it out toward the end.
Okay.
And each different journal entry, for the most part, is a different fund, like Fund Eleven will be your general fund, Fund Twelve is your levy fund, anything in sixty-one is gonna be federal and state money.
Okay. All right. So I see it's like on page, on the back of the second page, it's got like software to the staff, general supplies, training, that sort of thing.
Us replacement.
Okay. Um, is there a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion.
Kenny has moved. Is there a second?
Yeah, I'll second.
Dave has seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed nay? Motion carries five zero. And next, we have the levy.
Money update.
Money update.
That's the packet with the yellow on the front. Basically, the columns just lay out what's in the levy call. Items one through fourteen to eight are all in the levy call, which is your last two pages. The third column over is how much we've anticipated through the end of two thousand and twenty-three, or June thirtieth, twenty-three. The next column is what's already been expended or encumbered. The next column's committed, which means we already know those funds are gonna be spent by two thousand and twenty-three, they just haven't been incurred yet. The column at the end is your balance. Instructional is overspent right now.
And I can speak on that, because we ordered science textbooks. I think the levy only had a hundred and twenty-five, and we spent over three hundred. You guys can remember that. The year before, it was math, and the year before, reading.
And then what we do at the end of the year is, that'll get reclassified to step seven, our county funds, because you wrote the levy funds out. Arts has about fourteen thousand accounted for for this year, but we haven't done anything with theater or anything. They said that only happens in January, so that will use up that amount, I'm assuming.
And Adam Lowden is telling me he needs a tuba, and he's got him on loan, and they're five thousand. We provided to high school. It's great to have tuba players.
And then anything in yellow has to do with payroll, and each month, that number will reduce. By the end of the year, all of it will be used up, and then we'll have to offset all of it with county funds. Any questions on any of these?
So you've got, uh, item number six says personnel. Uh, anticipated three-year based on levy amount, two million, four hundred and sixty-three thousand, nine hundred and eighty-seven dollars. Anticipated use, it's got, uh, eight hundred, we have eight hundred and twenty-three thousand, three hundred and twenty-nine dollars left for personnel.
Right, and what do we do?
For up to, including the year two thousand and twenty-three, is that correct?
Yeah, it goes through June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-three. Each month, that will reduce.
So the paychecks tomorrow will reduce this a little bit, and the paychecks at the end of the month will reduce this a little bit.
Yeah, they're setting salary.
That, that is as of this last payroll. Correct? Okay.
Okay. Thank you, Mrs. Spencer. We'll move on to the personnel agendas.
Me and I reading this.
Yes, if you would like. I was a butcher.
No, do we, do we have to make a motion on levy money update?
No, I don't think so.
Prove it, no? Said make a motion, second motion.
I don't know.
We've already approved it, I mean.
Why? It's just really up there.
It's, yeah, that was for the budget entry, the journal entry changes above.
Oh, okay, oh, okay. I'm looking at the line wrong. Sorry about that.
That's okay. Um, a superintendent's recommendation, except the, do we need to take one of these separately?
Which?
On the.
Personnel?
Yeah. Except the following resignations and retirements. A, Catherine Mifter, resignation of the two SAT coordinator positions, Peterson Central Elementary School, effective November one, two thousand and twenty-two. B, Brandon Schinaberry, resignation, long-term substitute science teacher, effective October thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-two. C, Laura Coffield, resignation, itinerant special education aide, Jane Lou Elementary School, effective October twenty-fifth, two thousand and twenty-two. D, Dwayne Brown, resignation, substitute bus operator, Lewis County Schools, effective November third, two thousand and twenty-two. E, Karen Scioscia, resignation, title one, parent involvement coordinator, effective November one, two thousand and twenty-two. And F, Janice Copely, resignation, substitute aide, effective November fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-two. Is there a motion to approve?
Make a motion.
Dave has moved. Is there a second?
Second.
Second.
Second by Adam. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed nay? Motion carries, um, five zero. Number two, consider and approve the following requests, and we've had a request to take B and C separately. A, Julie Oldacre, approved as non-paid girls' basketball coach, Lewis County High School, effective two thousand and twenty-two, two thousand and twenty-three school year. And D, Chris Daniels, approved unpaid leave of absence, October twenty-second, two thousand and twenty-two, to December ninth, two thousand and twenty-two. Is there a motion to approve those two, A and D?
Make a motion.
Kenny has moved. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mike. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay. Motion carries five zero. Two B, Loretta Workman, approved unpaid medical leave of absence, October twenty-sixth, two thousand and twenty-two. And C, Loretta Workman, approved unpaid medical leave of absence, October thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-two, to November first, two thousand and twenty-two. Is there a motion to approve?
I can make a motion if we go into executive session.
Hold on a second.
I'll do this one, so.
For B and C.
Which one?
Wants to do five.
Okay.
I'm missing page.
Which one? Which one, Kenny?
Maybe it's in there. All right. So, um, Mike requesting executive session to discuss personnel agenda item two B and C. And Kenny is requesting for five A. Do I have a motion to go into executive session under West Virginia Code six nine eight four to discuss personnel items two B and C and five A of the personnel agenda?
Make a motion.
Mike has moved. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Kenny. Is there any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay? Motion carries five zero. The time is now. Motion carries five zero. The time is now. Dave made a motion. Kenny, have you, was that a second?
Yeah.
Is there any discussion? All in favor say aye.
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 Opposed nay. Motion carries three two. Item three, we have no. No personnel there. Item four, employ the following service personnel. B, Carrie Monae, day-to-day substitute aide, Lewis County Schools, posting number three oh two. Effective November sixteenth, twenty twenty-two. And C, Leanne Riffle, day-to-day substitute cook, Lewis County Schools, posting three oh three, effective November sixteenth, twenty twenty-two, pending background check. F, Millie Metzger, Itenant Special Education Aid, Robert L. Bland Middle School, effective November sixteenth, twenty twenty-two. And G, Marlene Wade Cook, Lewis County High School, posting number three twenty, effective November sixteenth, twenty twenty-two. Is there a motion to approve?
Make a motion.
Make a motion, or second.
Okay, Mike is moved. Dave is second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay. Motion carries five zero. Five, employ the following coaching vacancies. A, Stephanie Bishop, girls JV basketball coach, Robert L. Bland Middle School, effective twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three school year. Is there a motion to approve?
Make a motion.
Dave is moved. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Adam. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay.
Nay.
Motion carries three two. Item three, we have no. No personnel there. Item four, employ the following service personnel. B, Carrie Monae, day-to-day substitute aide, Lewis County Schools, posting number three oh two. Effective November sixteenth, twenty twenty-two. And C, Leanne Riffle, day-to-day substitute cook, Lewis County Schools, posting three oh three, effective November sixteenth, twenty twenty-two, pending background check. F, Millie Metzger, Itenant Special Education Aid, Robert L. Bland Middle School, effective November sixteenth, twenty twenty-two. And G, Marlene Wade Cook, Lewis County High School, posting number three twenty, effective November sixteenth, twenty twenty-two. Is there a motion to approve?
Make a motion.
Make a motion, or second.
Okay, Mike is moved. Dave is second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay. Motion carries five zero. Five, employ the following coaching vacancies. A, Stephanie Bishop, girls JV basketball coach, Robert L. Bland Middle School, effective twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three school year. Is there a motion to approve?
Make a motion.
Dave is moved. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Adam. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay.
Nay.
Motion carries four one. Six, employ the following professional extracurricular vacancies. A, Teresa Blend, beginning teacher mentor, physical education, Jane Louu Elementary School, effective the twenty twenty-two, twenty-three school year. C, Victoria Stansbury, spelling bee coordinator, countywide, effective for the twenty twenty-two, twenty-three school year. E, Laura Davis, SAT coordinator, grades eleven and twelve, Lewis County High School, effective for the twenty twenty-two, twenty-three school year. G, Laura Davis, Saturday detention hall monitor, Lewis County High School, effective for the twenty twenty-two, twenty-three school year. Is there a motion to approve?
Make a motion.
Mike is moved. Is there a second?
No, second.
Kenny is second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Say nay if you're not in favor. Sorry. Motion carries five zero. Approve the following current volunteers for the twenty twenty-two, twenty-three school year as listed. Jane Louu Elementary School, Kristy Mills, there's none. Phyllis Polling, Lewis County High School, Eric Sherard, Roanoke Elementary School, Tammy Posey and Amy Short, Robert L. Bland Middle School, Sarah Marsh, Eric Sherard, Amy Short. Is there a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion.
Kenny's moved. Is there a second?
Second.
Mike is second. Is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed nay. Motion carries five zero. All right. Then we have the facilities and construction update.
Okay, with construction, we'll still working on, you know, getting the air conditioning. But under the schools in this notebook, the custodians, Melissa and I met and we felt like our custodians are slash custodian slash maintenance and they can do some things. And we sent that out and we reported they're working on it. And I will give you an example. Danny Heater replaced, I think, the fifth grade hallway. Ceiling tiles and then the bathroom flooded, you know, but they are working on it. Now at Roanoke tightened all the outlets in the building, secured the roof ladder, checked on the pipe and the ceiling in the gym. And they installed the outlet in the pre-k near the aquarium. And we'll have this highlighted in your book. Peterson, they, they bolted. The septic lid on the playground and moved the outlets in the kitchen. The sprinkler, they checked the valves leaking. Well, no, we need Brewer to do that. And they wanted to add additional lights in the first grade hallway with security. Okay. Lewis County High School. Don't have anything on that list. Bus garage, they did adjust the front door sticking. And they secured all the outlets in one twenty-one, one sixteen, one seventeen, done. And removed a power cord sticking out the window in the back of the building. And they replaced the light bulbs in Jerry and Tanya's office in sixteen and seventeen. At Robert L. Gun, I'm sorry, Robert. Bland Middle School, they put the dual mechanic in the art room. And they put the water fountain that drains slowly in one twenty-one. Jane Louu. They can't extend the sewage near the cafeteria. The answer is yes. They did the library, thermos not working. They took care of the art room. And they put a power vent to get rid of the odor. We haven't heard that it's stinky. The water fountain pre-k, it was, they just needed a principal, they take it in and out during winter. And they fixed a leaking toilet in the girls restroom in the handicap store. In the board, we can't remove the tank until we get a replacement with a boil. And they did remove the old water tank in the kitchen. And so I met with them today and I'll meet with them on, I'll meet with them on Wednesday again. That was maintenance. So we are working on the list. And then we're gonna go around and again, meet with the principals and walk with the custodians. Of what their, their custodians could do.
Consider approved memorandum of agreement between the Marshall University Research Corporation and the Lewis County Board of Education. And that is pages nineteen and twenty in our packet. Is there a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion.
Kenny's moved. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mike. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay. Motion carries five zero. On our policy update, review chapters forty-one, twenty point oh four, employment of substitutes, that's pages twenty-one through twenty-three in our packet. Is there a motion to approve?
Make a motion.
Dave is moved. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Adam. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay. Motion carries five zero. Approve the following current volunteers for the twenty twenty-two, twenty-three school year as listed. Jane Louu Elementary School, Kristy Mills, there's none. Phyllis Polling, Lewis County High School, Eric Sherard, Roanoke Elementary School, Tammy Posey and Amy Short, Robert L. Bland Middle School, Sarah Marsh, Eric Sherard, Amy Short. Is there a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion.
Kenny's moved. Is there a second?
Second.
Mike is second. Is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay.
Nay.
Motion carries four one. Six, employ the following professional extracurricular vacancies. A, Teresa Blend, beginning teacher mentor, physical education, Jane Louu Elementary School, effective the twenty twenty-two, twenty-three school year. C, Victoria Stansbury, spelling bee coordinator, countywide, effective for the twenty twenty-two, twenty-three school year. E, Laura Davis, SAT coordinator, grades eleven and twelve, Lewis County High School, effective for the twenty twenty-two, twenty-three school year. G, Laura Davis, Saturday detention hall monitor, Lewis County High School, effective for the twenty twenty-two, twenty-three school year. Is there a motion to approve?
Make a motion.
Mike is moved. Is there a second?
No, second.
Kenny is second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Say nay if you're not in favor. Sorry. Motion carries five zero. Approve the following current volunteers for the twenty twenty-two, twenty-three school year as listed. Jane Louu Elementary School, Kristy Mills, there's none. Phyllis Polling, Lewis County High School, Eric Sherard, Roanoke Elementary School, Tammy Posey and Amy Short, Robert L. Bland Middle School, Sarah Marsh, Eric Sherard, Amy Short. Is there a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion.
Kenny's moved. Is there a second?
Second.
Mike is second. Is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay.
Nay.
Motion carries three two. Item three, we have no. No personnel there. Item four, employ the following service personnel. B, Carrie Monae, day-to-day substitute aide, Lewis County Schools, posting number three oh two. Effective November sixteenth, twenty twenty-two. And C, Leanne Riffle, day-to-day substitute cook, Lewis County Schools, posting three oh three, effective November sixteenth, twenty twenty-two, pending background check. F, Millie Metzger, Itenant Special Education Aid, Robert L. Bland Middle School, effective November sixteenth, twenty twenty-two. And G, Marlene Wade Cook, Lewis County High School, posting number three twenty, effective November sixteenth, twenty twenty-two. Is there a motion to approve?
Make a motion.
Make a motion, or second.
Okay, Mike is moved. Dave is second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay. Motion carries five zero. Five, employ the following coaching vacancies. A, Stephanie Bishop, girls JV basketball coach, Robert L. Bland Middle School, effective twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three school year. Is there a motion to approve?
Make a motion.
Dave is moved. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Adam. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay.
Nay.
Motion carries four one. Six, employ the following professional extracurricular vacancies. A, Teresa Blend, beginning teacher mentor, physical education, Jane Louu Elementary School, effective the twenty twenty-two, twenty-three school year. C, Victoria Stansbury, spelling bee coordinator, countywide, effective for the twenty twenty-two, twenty-three school year. E, Laura Davis, SAT coordinator, grades eleven and twelve, Lewis County High School, effective for the twenty twenty-two, twenty-three school year. G, Laura Davis, Saturday detention hall monitor, Lewis County High School, effective for the twenty twenty-two, twenty-three school year. Is there a motion to approve?
Make a motion.
Mike is moved. Is there a second?
No, second.
Kenny is second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And say nay if you're not in favor. Sorry. Motion carries five zero. Approve the following current volunteers for the twenty twenty-two, twenty-three school year as listed. Jane Louu Elementary School, Kristy Mills, there's none. Phyllis Polling, Lewis County High School, Eric Sherard, Roanoke Elementary School, Tammy Posey and Amy Short, Robert L. Bland Middle School, Sarah Marsh, Eric Sherard, Amy Short. Is there a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion.
Kenny's moved. Is there a second?
Second.
Mike is second. Is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay. Motion carries five zero. All right. Then we have the facilities and construction update.
Okay, with construction, we'll still working on, you know, getting the air conditioning. But under the schools in this notebook, the custodians, Melissa and I met and we felt like our custodians are slash custodian slash maintenance and they can do some things. And we sent that out and we reported they're working on it. And I will give you an example. Danny Heater replaced, I think, the fifth grade hallway. Ceiling tiles and then the bathroom flooded, you know, but they are working on it. Now at Roanoke tightened all the outlets in the building, secured the roof ladder, checked on the pipe and the ceiling in the gym. And they installed the outlet in the pre-k near the aquarium. And we'll have this highlighted in your book. Peterson, they, they bolted. The septic lid on the playground and moved the outlets in the kitchen. The sprinkler, they checked the valves leaking. Well, no, we need Brewer to do that. And they wanted to add additional lights in the first grade hallway with security. Okay. Lewis County High School. Don't have anything on that list. Bus garage, they did adjust the front door sticking. And they secured all the outlets in one twenty-one, one sixteen, one seventeen, done. And removed a power cord sticking out the window in the back of the building. And they replaced the light bulbs in Jerry and Tanya's office in sixteen and seventeen. At Robert L. Gun, I'm sorry, Robert. Bland Middle School, they put the dual mechanic in the art room. And they put the water fountain that drains slowly in one twenty-one. Jane Louu. They can't extend the sewage near the cafeteria. The answer is yes. They did the library, thermostat's not working. They took care of the art room. And they put a power vent to get rid of the odor. We haven't heard that it's stinky. The water fountain pre-k, it was, they just needed a principal, they take it in and out during winter. And they fixed a leaking toilet in the girls restroom in the handicap store. In the board, we can't remove the tank until we get a replacement with a boil. And they did remove the old water tank in the kitchen. And so I met with them today and I'll meet with them on, I'll meet with them on Wednesday again. That was maintenance. So we are working on the list. And then we're gonna go around and again, meet with the principals and walk with the custodians. Of what their, their custodians could do.
Consider approved memorandum of agreement between the Marshall University Research Corporation and the Lewis County Board of Education. And that is pages nineteen and twenty in our packet. Is there a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion.
Kenny's moved. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mike. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay. Motion carries five zero. On our policy update, review chapters forty-one, twenty point oh four, employment of substitutes, that's pages twenty-one through twenty-three in our packet. Is there a motion to approve?
Make a motion.
Dave is moved. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Adam. Any discussion?
Yes.
We, we approved this, but the language that we approved isn't what got typed. And it was brought up, there seems to be some confusion. And we wanna make sure we read this clearly and this is what we're saying. We're saying if they, they have to come to work by day ten. Is that not the intent? So if I'm a substitute, I can miss nine calls, but on day ten, I need to work or I will be removed.
And you still get the letter on the eighth day, is that correct?
Yes. But you could see where the post office could be slow. I wanna make sure you understand that. And we have people, you've got, you know, people resigning because they have other jobs and they can't work or don't want to. But I think this is really reasonable. I just wanna make sure and we need to read it and make sure it's what the intent.
Can we overnight it to them?
I think if I'm a substitute, I would know if I missed day ten.
No, I'm talking about, you said the mail being slow. Can we overnight it to them?
I don't.
I mean, that, that makes sure they get it the next day. I mean, that's what's called overnight.
We could call them.
I mean, think about it. I don't get my board agenda until.
Right, it goes to Charleston.
Sometimes Monday.
They, when you mail things, it goes to Charleston.
Normally, normally mine comes on Monday.
That's why, but you get it, that's why we send it electronic.
But I have the email, so I have it all by email.
But we can't send a letter on the eighth day.
Yeah.
And expect it to be there.
That's a good point.
But an email, an email.
They might not answer their email.
Through their K-12.
We're talking about.
Can we call them? But then they might not answer the phone. I just think they need to be responsible to keep track.
Yeah, I think it's their obligation.
I think it's theirs. I don't know that, then you're gonna have to have someone checking smartphone.
How, how many people have we, have we had resign?
Two.
Already?
Mm-hmm.
I mean, that tells them we're gonna make a change. We can't afford to lose two.
Well, they don't wanna work. They don't wanna work.
Well, the one that was on there tonight, I think she got another job at the hospital or something.
And she said she.
And it was, right.
And she said she could not work every ten days.
Right.
And it's in code that we have to hire from the substitute list.
That's correct.
And a lot of people that have a job can't sub.
Well, let's go back to my comment earlier. The preschool. When you get a phone call at seven o'clock or seven fifteen. Those people, day is already planned out. Especially if they're, they have another job.
So what are we gonna say on day eight? How would, what would you think would be?
How many days would it, do you think it would take to where if we send the note out that they would get it?
At least. I wanna say five, maybe. Because we send agenda Wednesday, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, Saturday. You guys get it Monday, five.
Sometimes I get it on Saturday. I've gotten it on Friday before.
I used to, I used to get it on Friday. Now mostly I get it on Saturday, but.
I mean, if we're gonna hold to a letter, I think we're opening ourselves up for trouble.
I'd rather not do a letter. I think people need to keep track of it.
What if we would back up to like six days and send a letter? That would give it time to go through the mail system all the time.
Can we not just say, keep track of it? They can.
Well, can we not say that we go back to the sixth day?
It takes five days.
Well, it's, it's instances. That doesn't mean that they're gonna get called every day.
Right, but one of, yeah, right.
I, I don't know. I just, I, I guess I'm old school. I think that if you're an adult, you're employed, you wanna be employed, you wanna work, you don't wanna work. You know where to go to work or not. When I hear stories about people say, oh, I overslept and I, oh, I didn't know I was scheduled today. I'm thinking how responsible when you don't even know you're scheduled to work on a certain day. Kinda bothers me, but, so.
But there is some employees, like you said, that just call in and some, sometimes in their defense, they get sick of it, you know, they wake up sick.
Yeah, but they should know that I haven't showed up for work ten times when they've called me. They should keep track of that as an employee, a, a potential employee or sub.
I think in an emergency.
And who's gonna keep track of it?
I think in an emergency case like that, I think that, that if, 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 if an employee calls in and they, they have been. You know, and it is an emergency, sometimes, you know, they have, have to be off or a home emergency or something. If that's the case and then we can't get a hold of the sub, I don't think a sub ought to be held accountable if they couldn't go on emergency notice like that. I don't think we ought to hold that against them.
What if they ring us a doctor's excuse when they missed the tenth day? There's too many variables in there.
Well, if we, if we say we're gonna send them, you need to know who's gonna send that letter. You know. Someone will have to watch smartphone. And I think, I think.
But we're talking about a substitute call list. The, the call goes to your house. If you don't answer that phone, it doesn't count as a, that you didn't show up. You have to answer the phone and decline.
Well, no, no. If you don't answer it, if you don't answer it, it counts as a decline. Because you'd have everybody not answering the phone, so it wouldn't count as a decline. And we have a text ability to, they could receive a text. Because a lot of times people would say, I don't get the phone because I have a cellphone, but they can get a text.
Well, I mean, and we, we need to remember, my understanding of the reason that we wanted this policy was because if you have to hire from the sub list. What happens is there, if we don't have a policy that says you get removed, that they never answer, they never answer, they never answer, they end up at the top of the seniority list. And then all of a sudden, they've got the full-time job with all the benefits and the people who have been, you know, maybe gonna go to the grocery store that day or something. And get that call at seven o'clock have been showing up to work. And then they are still way down on the seniority list.
You're rewarding the person by, to give them a job who never ever go to work.
Mm-hmm. All they gotta do is get on the list and hang there, the way things are now. And I don't think that's wise. This may not be the perfect way to take care of it, but it's a start. And it's the way that it once was, right?
Yeah, this was, and then we narrowed it to, I think, five days. Like other counties did it and, and we, then we realized we're cutting off our nose to spite ourselves, that old saying. Because we need subs and most of our subs need a job and they work another job until they get hired. And this way they could do two days for Lewis County in a month and keep on the list. Because there's about twenty days in a.
Twenty days in a school month. Two days a month.
My comment's gonna be, everybody needs to be treated fairly then. If we're gonna go with this, everybody needs to be treated fairly. If we've had a substitute for fifteen years, if they miss ten consecutive days, they need to be treated the same as somebody new.
And that should be happening.
Mm-hmm. And before covert, we did remove people off the sub list because we could pull out the smartphone. And before COVID, we did remove people off the sub list because we could pull out the smartphone, and they just didn't answer their phone, or they declined, and then they'd say, well, we didn't get the phone call, well, is this your correct number, it showed. And it would, it even shows if they got a answering machine.
But we can, we can call twenty times and then not answer the phone.
And it counts as a not showing up.
It counts?
Yeah. It, it would be a no-show.
But I mean, now you could call twenty times, and they wouldn't answer, and they'd still be on the list.
The only thing I'm saying is, if we've got enough trouble having subs here, I mean, even if they work three or four days a, a year, that'd be three or four days if something's covered.
Well, then you're allowing them to move up over people that show up to work.
Have we answered your question about what happens on day eight?
I need to know that, because it says, we want to make sure. So how are we going to...
The only other thing I could say, like I said, like I said before, if we would move the, 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 the day of the note, or, you know, back a few days to where they wouldn't get it.
And you feel we have to tell them?
Yes.
You know, uh, I shouldn't say this, but it's kind of a funny story, I know a person that got a letter in the mail one time, said they were terminated. They kept going to work. And they said, you can't come to work, and he said, I didn't get notification. So they sent a certified registered letter, the person kept going to work. They said, well, we sent you, you signed for a letter, he said, yeah, I got a letter, but it was empty, there was nothing in it. So he got about three or four more weeks of employment before they could terminate him. So we could extend it two days, three days, five days, all person has to say is, I didn't get it.
All a person's got to do is say, I didn't get a phone call, and then we're going to put more...
Well, smartphone shows that, it shows they call, it does show that.
That's the computerized system that starts looking for subs, right?
Yes.
I think we're just arguing something that's responsibility for the employee, it's their responsibility, it's on them.
But here we are, trying to get more pressure on our subs, when we have people that don't even show up to work every day now, and we can't do nothing about it.
Good point.
I think perhaps what is being done is there's a process that you have to go through, and while the process is cumbersome, it's being gone through, I don't know...
The process don't take two years.
In Lewis County, it does.
Well, it shouldn't be that way, that's why we're here.
It's...
That's why we are here.
We're talking about substitutes.
Talking about this policy.
Well, and I'm speaking about this policy.
But I think...
We're going to put pressure on these subs that we might need one day, when we have our own employees, employed by Lewis County School System, that we can't do anything with if they miss fifty-five days.
Most of our employees show up.
Most. And we're just letting our children down when somebody don't show up.
Out of, out of all the subs, how many, how many don't show up?
We have a, a few that will probably be removed because they don't show up.
So most, in other words, most of the subs work?
We've had, we've got a couple, I know we have a couple cooks that haven't showed up in two years, that probably need removed. And we, because of COVID, we, that's why we're revisiting it. So those cooks would move up and hadn't showed up for two years, and we need them. We need our subs to show up if we have to hire them off the list, and we need a policy.
Well, there again, I mean, it's basically the same thing, like you're saying, you're, you're saying on one side, the, the, the teachers, and then you're saying on one side, the subs.
Service we have to hire off the list.
I, I understand that, but what I'm saying is, I, I still think the, the way for us to go is to send them the note, at least that way, e, I mean, if they're not going to work, they're not going to work, I mean, I reckon whether we send the note or not, but at least if we send to work the note, then maybe that could save us some people that we desperately need right now.
So you, how, the note's sixth day on day six? Is that what you're saying?
Five or six, well, however many days it would take to, for them to get it, send it out regular mail, or send it overnight. If you send it overnight, then you could do it six. Or send them where they got to sign it.
That's certified.
Yeah.
Well, do you know, a lot of times what happens with those is nobody claims them.
Yep.
Just do up the record of it, like, if you send them. If you don't have record, if you stick, stick it in the regular mail.
I mean, if we had oodles of subs, then, then I'd say, yeah, but we all know what shape we're in with subs. Like I said, if they work ten, twelve days out of the year, it's ten or twelve days that, you know...
But that's not fair to your people who, your subs who show up all the time.
And then a warning four times. And we do have, we do have subs that are really looking forward to that job.
I understand that, and, and, and I agree with you on that, but what I'm saying is, what about the subs that these people here could have went ahead, and even if they worked ten or twelve or fifteen days a year, I mean, if, if they worked, then that's, then that person, that employee's going to get off that day. I mean, if we had plenty of subs, we wouldn't even be having this conversation, but...
I, I don't know that, I mean, obviously, we've had some issues with having both subs, but I don't know otherwise that we are having issues with subs.
Jerry, could you spend a little light on that, how, how is it going with you with the subs, I mean, the first...
No, I said we had problems there, I said, I don't know that we have problems with numbers of subs elsewhere. We just have people on the list that don't ever show up, that we need to, to deal with.
Have a policy to remove.
I, 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 I agree, I mean, I do agree that, that people want to work, yes, I, I agree, in, in part what Dave said. But then again, it, it's, we're, I don't think we're in that position, I mean, I think we just need to take what subs we can get, and work on what days we can work, and, but, I mean...
Well, we've got ten days.
We've got ten, we've got ten instances.
Yes.
That doesn't mean necessarily...
Right, ten times they can say no, and that, that's a lot.
Yeah.
On day ten, they're out, but they have to come to work on day ten, that's very reasonable. Because that might take two months to reach.
Or longer.
Yeah, it could be. And so you want a letter on day six?
An overnight letter, yes.
I don't want a letter, I think it's their responsibility, they can, I've already addressed that, and we just keep sitting here talking and talking and talking, but we don't do anything, because none of us seem to want to change our mind. So me, it's employees' responsibility to know that they have not showed up ten times.
Okay, you don't want a letter, I do, what's the rest of the field, you two, Adam?
I don't have a problem with the letter, frankly, and I, you know, just kind of allow me to dovetail the conversation, or we'll call it complaints that I think Kenny and I received about the parent, parent teacher conference, where the teachers weren't there, unfortunately, parents wanted to consult with them, and it's just all about the notification process. Is there a better way of notifying substitutes, full-time staff, parents? I'm not saying the letter's the right thing, it's a text, it's an email, I'm not sure what the, what the right answer is, but there, there's got to be a, a way that we can notify our staff and, uh, our parents about what's going on.
There's...
That's my, that's my big...
We have social media, uh, we have the call-out system, and I did check into that, and that was, um, on Robert L. Bland's Facebook page and social media that, if a teacher wasn't going to show up.
I mean, with all due respect, I saw that response, but I, I don't have social media, so I, I, I just don't know that, I don't know that that is going to be...
Not everybody would do it, right.
To get it out there.
And that's embarrassing when else has a board, several parents showing up, and not have, not one sixth-grade teacher.
Hey...
Well, that's, that's a whole different issue, we need to talk, to settle this.
Now, it ties back to this issue.
I make a motion that on six days, we send them a overnight letter, uh, saying that...
We, we already have a motion on the floor that we need to deal with or anything.
Well, I'd like them to amend the motion.
Well, it's Dave's motion.
I'm sorry.
It's your motion for the, the policy, the employment of, of substitutes, and Mike is asking you to amend it to where it's six...
I'm willing to amend it.
Days, okay, Adam, are you willing to amend that the letter goes out after the sixth occurrence?
I am.
All right.
No, overnight.
Or certified.
Or certified, yes, certified, which would be, I reckon, as long as they get it within overnight twenty-four hours, certified.
I don't know that certified sends it overnight, you want them to sign that they got it.
Yeah, I would, I would say that there is something that you could get.
Certified is one thing, overnight's a different thing.
Well, I, I wanted to where, if you send it out on Wednesday, that Thursday afternoon, Friday morning, they'll have it in their hands, whatever that is, if it's certified, or whichever it is.
I'll have to check into that. And we can, you know, review this the next time, and do, do we want it to go to effect till January one, you know, to make it a cleaner? So, and then I'll check into certified overnight, I'll talk to the postmaster.
All right, any other discussion? So, we're voting on the policy in pages twenty-one through twenty-three, but it's going to be six days instead of eight, it's going to be effective January one, and it's going to be certified or overnight, whatever, we'll get there faster, which is Dr. Lewis is going to talk to the post office. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose nay?
Nay.
Motion carries four one. Next, we have, um, there's no discussion there, okay, have reports and discussion, Mrs. Nesselrode?
Well, could, could we, under discussion, could we go under executive with Mr. Parks, is that...
All I'm concerned with is actually, I, I don't care about anybody who works for the board, to hear about...
I know, but it's, we are streaming it, Mr. Parks.
Yeah, that's what I'm...
Okay.
Yes, we are streaming it.
If it's the only way we can do that, we can shut that.
That is true, because they, they, Mr. Ted records it, and then anybody could go back and listen.
Yeah.
I'll make a motion to go in executive session.
Under discussion, he's waited all evening and...
But they've all waited all evening.
I know.
Okay, do, I have a motion, I have a motion.
Yep.
And Adam has seconded, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose nay?
Who made the motion, you all were talking about?
Kimmy, yeah, and the time is eight thirty-five, and Mr. Parks... And by Kenny, is there a second?
I have a second.
Second by Dave, is there any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye. Aye.
All post nay. Motion carries five, zero. The time is eight forty-six. Let the record show that no action was taken in the executive session. Mrs. Nesselrode?
You guys been moving that sign a lot tonight. You want me to get the lights or? When you get finished, can you, is it a PowerPoint, can you send it to Mr. Gissy?
Yes. I'm gonna do it. But, most of it's talking, but they're running.
Okay.
Which side is this going?
I can show you.
Sorry, Adam, my empty bottle drinking habit of water just fell over there.
Okay.
Anybody need another water?
No.
Um, of course, those that are new, I know Adam is new, so he's probably not going to have known Mr. Gissy. So I just wanted to make sure that I review what it is we do. And I tried to go more in depth to about what a typical day, what, what I'm dealing with. And, um, first thing I'm gonna start with is child nutrition. Um, child nutrition is made up of numerous programs. There's the National School Lunch Program. There's the Fresh Fruit and Vegetable Grant. There is, um, the Summer Food Program. Farm to School, Feed to Achieve. For instance, Farm to School is where the state of West Virginia requires that a certain percentage of everything we buy is local. And it has to be included in, um, our overall, we have to look at how much do we spend? And you have to have a certain percentage of what you're spending to be local. Like, right now, we're buying, most of our local food would be local beef. And some of our produce comes from Crook Brothers and Crooks Brothers. That can kind of count if some of that's coming like West Virginia apples. But that's really kind of difficult to document. But that is a requirement. Um, Feed to Achieve is basically, um, it's, the whole premise behind Feed to Achieve is to get counties and other agencies to work together. For instance, for us, we, um, we braid the funds that were for, um, the Backpack Program. So the state will give me X amount of money, as not me, but the county will get awarded a certain amount of money that's considered backpack funding. What I do is I work with the FRN, and we put our funds and their funds together. And that's how the backpacks have been being given to the students. So I, I usually fill out the grant for it. We try to get as much as we can so that we can, then the CISs go actually to, um, each school. Goes, picks up the number of Backpack Buddies, and then they're distributed at the school level. Every federal program has guidelines. Um, each one of these programs or initiatives require oversight and are based on federal state law. I wanted to pull up from here to give you an idea. If you look, this is, um, now how do I get my screen to be something different, Jeff? I want it to be. Okay. If you, um, the, this is the State Department's School Nutrition Programs. As you can see, there are all kinds of different things that follow underneath here. For instance, this policy, four, three, two, one point one, that is an additional policy that's the state of West Virginia added on top of the federal policy. So that's in here. Now, um, each county, I want to show you our reimbursement rates. Because people always say, why is she funny, so funny about counting the meals that we serve? Well, the reason we gotta count the meals that we serve is because we wanna get a reimbursement for those meals. Okay, for the National School Lunch Program, for instance, these are the reimbursement rates. So for every student that we serve a meal to, we get reimbursed four thirty-three. So four dollars and thirty-three cents. And that is not that much to be putting into a school lunch. Um, there is also a, um, and there's also, in breakfast, I believe. It's two, it's around two dollars. But let's, I don't, I don't wanna keep boring you all with all of this stuff. This will give you an idea, though, people always say to me, Cindy, why do you serve what you serve? Or why is it we sometimes see a meal come out and there's only three things on a tray? Okay, people ask me that. Well, basically, we have to follow meal patterns. And we have to follow something that's called offer versus serve. So what we do in this county is if it is pre-K, one, kindergarten, one and two, we do serve. Those kids just get the whole menu that we planned for, and it goes out. Every kid that gets a meal, we get us turned in to be reimbursed. Now, for kids from third grade on up, we do what's called offer versus serve. So the, I'm gonna show you here in a minute, there's components that are in the meal pattern that we have to use. Now, students, because we wanna save on waste, we want the student to have a choice in the matter. So why would we put, for instance, some kids don't like green beans? Okay? They may opt out of those beans, but they still take the other items on the plate that still count as a reimbursable meal. All right? So that's kind of confusing, because a lot of times, you'll see some kids and you'll think, oh, that's all they had for lunch? But there is a line of other things. And I wanna pass this down while you look at it and let you all look at it. I didn't make a copy for everyone. Every single head cook in the county gets a packet like this from our office that shows the exact breakdown of what it is we're serving and where it fits into the meal pattern. And that's all done by spreadsheets. So in this packet, you'll see what the head cooks get. Um, it basically shows you some notes from us. She goes through, what do you want to order from Crooks, what do you want from USDA? Um, then we have the menu, what are supposed to be on the menu.
Is it the duties of the head cook?
And they get paid very little for doing a whole lot more.
As far as the menu, or is that just ordering?
Yeah, this, this stuff is central office things, you know? The, now, the, the head cooks will get this packet, and they have to order from it. They have to look at the menu, see what they've got, and they order from this menu packet based on what's in on the menu. For instance, like in here, you'll see, we even make notes that says to the cooks, don't get this off the food service because it's in the USDA freezer over here. Okay?
So is that for a day or a week, or?
This is a month.
That's a month, okay.
This is a month packet that shows. And I just wanted to let you all see the packets that we send out. So this is the December menu packet, and that's a wonderful thing that the cooks have. And it's all right at their fingertips, and it's pretty much the, all the guesswork about how much you serve and what you serve is kind of taken out of it.
So like in, like in two weeks on the menu, it's supposed to be hamburger, green beans and applesauce. So they know a month ahead of time that on this day, it's hamburgers, green beans.
This went out about a week or so ago, and it's December's menu.
Okay. So when it comes time to serve that meal, those hamburg, beef should have been purchased by the head cook?
Yes.
The green beans should be there in cans, that, okay.
Yes, and sometimes you have people that will forget to order, or they, they're human and they make some mistakes, right?
It's hard to guess how many students are gonna eat.
And it's very difficult at the secondary level, because in elementary, they turn in, every day they have a lunch count in elementary. So every school, every room sends to the office, we're gonna have this many kids for eating lunch today. So then they send word to the kitchen that says, we've got X number of students signed up for lunch today. At the high school, it's a different animal. We have to go by those production records, which are in here, that you can see. And every time we serve a hamburger, about how many do we send, how many do we fix, and then add fifty to it or add twenty to it? My standing rule to them is, and they know this from the day when I started here, I don't care if you open a whole can of green beans up and, and heat one cup up in the microwave. You make sure that that kid got the green, you know, I mean, the corn or the green beans or whatever it is. Because it's really important. Now, that maybe not have been the practice so much, and I'm trying to really tighten that up. And, um, with new head cooks and just changing, and plus, I'm a different nutrition director than been here before. So my expectations are a little bit different. We're slowly coming along with what we need to do.
Okay, like here, like on the ninth here, it's got like hamburgers, you're talking about hamburgers, and I'm just gonna use that as an example. But just say the hamburger, cheeseburgers, lettuce, tomato and onion, uh, baked beans, fresh pepper or something. I can't see color, it's too dark in here, fresh pepper or something.
All of those things fit into.
And fruit.
A week, because here's what the government says to me. They say, Cindy, you've got five days this week. You have to have within that week so many things. You have to have a certain amount of red, orange. You have to have a certain amount of vegetables. You have to have a certain amount of fresh fruit. These are things you are required to have in the meal pattern. Then they can choose out of the meal pattern the older kids, because you want them to start trying foods in like third and fourth grade.
Now, like french fries, I mean, hamburg, to me, cheeseburgers and french fries go together so well.
Yeah.
Can, can you substitute and, and, and make them like cheeseburgers, hamburgers, french fries?
I've tried, what I'm doing is I told them the other day, every time we have a hamburger that needs to say cheeseburger too, then the kid can get what they want. Right? So I hope that got taken into consideration with there. I always just use it interchangeable. If the kids want a piece. Um, I have instituted, let's say, like they used to do a lot of stuff where they would wrap things up in foil and hold it a long time, and then put it out on somebody's tray. Oh, I can't stand that. So I've had the big powwow over, you serve it on the line, so it's warm in the tray on the line. And you hand the kid the bun, you put the hamburger on it. You put the cheese on it if they want it, and then they'll have a cup that has all the condiments. They could put like that lettuce, tomato and whatever. But all that goes together to calculate into, the next thing I wanna show you, which is the, um, so if you look on here, this is called the meal pattern and production records. So for instance, there's a breakfast meal pattern, and it looks like this. So when you do a meal pattern, we actually have cut those little dippers, they will match in size what we're supposed to be serving. Um, for instance, so if it calls for a cup of fruit, it needs to be a cup of fruit. It can't just be a small apple, that doesn't count as a cup of fruit. So all this stuff has to be verified or whatnot. Now, if you look at grains, that's the one that's very hard to, to manage, okay? Uh, grains for breakfast. You look at, there's a different amount of grains that can be served at each grade level. And, um, we have, of course, the requirement of our milk. Now, um, if you look at the lunch meal pattern, what does that look like? Um, these are daily minimums. Um, and you notice in here, and this is an old thing, all, all from two thousand fourteen and fifteen, all grains must be whole grain rich. So basically, what we're trying to serve is whole grain rich bread, and, and it has to be fifty-one percent. Okay?
Now, when you said you had trouble with the high school, is that because they don't have to tell you that they're going to eat, or they have a larger selection, and so?
No, it's, it's mostly because, I think we have a hard time at the high school because high school was your honor of the fifth decade. You see what I mean? So one day, when we have pepperoni rolls, we might have served five hundred. The next time you serve it, you may only get four hundred. So we're trying to guess, okay? But I'm telling them all. But I'm telling them all the time, gotta look at what you served the last time and add thirty to fifty more. That's just my rule. And that can be too much, right?
Or it may not be enough.
It may not be enough, understand? I would rather have too much than too little.
Okay, I'm still not, that still didn't answer my question. Do they not have to tell you how many kids are gonna eat?
No.
And why is that?
Cause we don't have students in classes. We have so many classes to send who's gonna eat lunch down and who's not. They, they decide if they wanna eat lunch, most high schools are that way at that time. They don't give a lunch count, cause they don't have a homeroom teacher. They don't have the single teacher, like elementary schools have one teacher. So, um, what happens is you, if you, once you get that packet, you'll see there's something called production records. You follow the production records, and um, sometimes the meal count was really loved for instance. Sometime it was, I don't think our presentation was very good, like I was talking about the foil and this and that. So you're trying to go by, how do we get it better, which we've done that. So now our numbers are starting to go up on stuff, so now we're trying to add a little bit more each time. But we don't have a number other than the last time we served it, when everybody was in school, this is how many we served on that meal. Then we try to take our highest meals, which guess what that is?
Pepperoni rolls.
Pepperoni rolls and chicken nuggets. Okay, that, you'll get kids eating anything and everything on those days. Um. But I have to do a variety of things, and you, and I'm trying to make at least three home cooked meals every week. Cause there's a whole lot of just heating up going on, you know, just heat, put the pizza in, heat it up. I'm trying to get us to make more like spaghetti sauce, we're not using the can. We're trying to go that direction. So when I had a review in a previous job, uh, the lady from the State Department, she said, always try to have three home cooked meals every week. You know, you can have that pizza that the kids are gonna eat, cause it's quick and it's fast and whatnot. Um, that, that, that's a real hard issue. Now, there's something that's coming out, which is part of why I wanted to go to that conference. There's a new thing coming out where kids can, might have an app to say if they're eating lunch or not. See what I'm saying? Say if they're eating lunch, and some states, like out west, they are actually saying, what do you want for lunch? Okay, and the kids are getting a choice, and so the cooks know exactly that day to make X number of hamburgers, X number of salads. See what I'm saying? So that's really what I'm trying to look into, but I don't wanna overwhelm the cooks. You know, cause that would just be totally different than what they're used to. But that's where this is kinda going, where kids have a choice. So that's what makes it difficult. But there's no reason why we should run out of food, okay? There is no reason, there's no excuse in my book, you know? And we've had that happen. And there is no excuse for it, um, you can ask anybody, I got really upset. But what happens is, you have to really train your people, and um, we're getting better, I'll say that.
So, not to interrupt you, but I do have a question. On the breakfast menu for December, I do not see egg on here one time. Do we not serve eggs for breakfast?
What, is that the grab and go breakfast menu, or is that the regular menu? We try to do a war menu and then there's a second chance.
Second breakfast menu.
Okay, that's the second chance breakfast. The second chance breakfast is offered usually at nine o'clock. That's a grab and go type, and it takes a lot of time for us to even stuff the bags to get those meals out, okay? So um, the grab and go is meant to be something that they can take with them. And what we find is a lot of the kids actually put it in their pocket, but save some breakfast. They save it for after school or for their sports thing. You see those boys fighting over who can get the, uh, a certain kind of bread that they serve, you know? But then, um. You all look so sleepy, I'm sorry, but I, I'm trying to get through this quick. But ask me anything you want, I mean, I'm not. Um, so here is the meal pattern for lunch. Now, I wanna go back to the um. So as you can see, we have, we operate six commercial kitchens. Um, each of those kitchens will have ovens, mixers, um, lots of time, what's called a tilt skillet, where they make something in a great big pot, and then the whole pan tilts to, um, there's things that we have to make, like let's say chili, spaghetti sauce, those kinds of things for those big schools are made in tilt skillets. Very expensive piece of equipment. We have nineteen full-time cooks and two part-time cooks. Um, I just threw in some pictures here. Now, I think this is Peterson over here on the left, uh, they're really good about sending their, their meals. Now, that's a full meal that a student got, would get all the components. That's a, an elementary student's meal, cause there's only one chicken leg there. And then the other picture is of National School Lunch, Lunch, Lunch Week, which we just had. And um, the, the theme this year was, um, peace, love, and school lunch. I've shown you those things, monitoring. Um, the state will come in and monitor every so many years. They will ask for my menus, they will ask for our, what the cooks keep, that production record. And they will ask for numerous items, and they will also look at what I'm serving, you know, what are we serving? Do we meet all those requirements? Did we have that orange, green, orange, whatever? Uh, the biggest thing facing us is they're gonna cut down the amount of sodium right now. So vendors are having a horrible time getting stuff that doesn't have a lot of salt in it. Now, let's just face it, we're all used to eating a lot of salt, you know? So that, so all these companies are now trying to make items that have less salt in them to help us. Um, somebody asked me, well, why do we even have to follow the federal government's program? And I think Morgantown, for instance, he's about to jump ship, okay? And he's about to turn it over to a, a company to run it up there. They do not have the number of free and reduced lunch that we have, okay? So because we have such a high number, and we have CEP, uh, we, I don't believe that we would qualify to a point, cause I don't even think they have any schools up there that have enough to, um, they get very few free, reduced lunch applications.
Even like at Claybattel and stuff?
In, in, in Mon County, yes. There's, he's got one school, he said, right now, that has free reduced, that qualify. Cause he doesn't qualify for CEP at all. So most schools are, are like us. We take the money from the government, they tell me what I've gotta serve, and um, but I, I wanted to explain that. Claiming meals, I'm always harping about, make sure you count the meal, okay? If they, so the reason we count the meal is it's done on what's called a point of service, just like when you check out at Walmart, that's called a point of service. You go through, they scan you through, that's your point of service. We have to count every meal that we serve. Now, we didn't have to during COVID, we can do it, we could just do a tally, okay? We did not have to have a meal matched to a student's name. COVID is over, we now have to have a student's name matched with that point of service. So that's done on the line, and that's what the kids have to be scanned in for.
So basically, just a lunch number?
Huh.
A lunch number?
Yes, they can, they type in their lunch number, for instance, and then that counts. Um, I'm gonna keep going here. Now, recent equipment upgrades. I know that when I talked to you all the last time, I talked about what we needed. And here are some of the things that we actually have purchased. Jan Lu is like a um, vertical cutter mixer, a freezer, a walk-in cooler, a continue, condensing unit. Peterson, a two-per gas range on back order, new pass-through refrigerator, three-door freezer, Rona, new slicer, garbage disposal, disposer, uh, new dishwasher, salinoid. Um, Leading Creek, we've had a garbage disposal, we're about to do her, um, it, we're, we've asked the truck drivers to move the food out of, before this break. We gotta move the food out of Leading Creek, so we can get a new unit for Leading Creek. So Wanda's knowing to use everything up, we gotta move everything down here, so you have to have it empty in order to do what we're doing. So we're gonna try to do one at Thanksgiving, we did a bunch this summer, but it's backorder parts are killing everybody, you know?
And we cook for St. Pat's, is that what I'm seeing here?
Yes, we do it for that. That, St. Pat's, and they fill out their own free and reduced forms, they send out their own lunch bills. That's, and they are not counted, because we do it by school. When I turn in a claim, I turn it in by our six schools. I don't turn in a claim for St. Pat's.
So do we get reimbursed, or do, or do they?
They don't get re, they don't get reimbursed, cause they're not part of the national.
But we do, what meal we send to them?
Right, no, we get.
The, the four dollars, and do we get reimbursed for meals we send to them?
Yes, we do, but what I was, what I was saying is, they don't get the money back, it's us that gets the money back. Yes, I see what you're saying, yeah, I'm sorry.
I also had a question on, on, on your equipment. You mentioned your refrigeration equipment and stuff. I noticed some bills here the last couple of months, uh, the same company always doing all the same repairing. Do you have a, a, a list of people that you go in a rotation?
There's, no, I don't go in a rotation. If it's over, uh, the, the threshold, I get three quotes always, okay? Most of our stuff, like all the big equipment we've been putting in, I've had Ward's company, uh, giving me a quote, I forget the other company's name, but I always get three quotes, and I have to keep record of those for when they come in and do an audit. Um, I have a tendency to lean toward, um, the person that I can get that will come. Like, for instance, we've got two, uh, problem with these, um, ovens at the high school right now. There's two, what's called, um, they're ovens that also run water through them. They're very, they're called, they're from, um, Electrolux, okay? I can't call the average person to just come in and work on them, it has to be statewide. Sometimes statewide won't even get here, cause that's the only one that can work on the Electrolux product. They won't give you a work manual, believe me, I've been through, it's crazy with this Electrolux, I did not buy them. But anyway, so statewide told us that they'd be here by the end of the week or next Monday. Luckily, we have another oven. So, um, a lot of times, I call a company called Commercial Kitchens, West Virginia. It's only because if I need something fast, I can usually get them there, and it's usually not something that's super expensive. Um, I also call, um, I used to call Mr. Ward some, but I was, he, he's so old now, he doesn't really want to do a whole lot. The best prices come in, like this time, we bought from Douglas Equipment one time. Um, so we don't always buy from one company. I have purchased a big item from Douglas, they won the bid, or the, whatever it's called, you know, get three quotes.
So I meant like service, like when they come out and work on service, stuff like, to come out and service. I, I know, it seemed like one company had been coming. So we got into that before, and come find out, they were charging a pretty good price, so. That's the only thing I'm looking at there, and that's what I'm asking.
And in the end, I'm trying to find somebody else, okay?
Do you have a list of people that you, that you have?
I have, I got a list about three or four places.
Just at your earliest convenience, could you, could I see a copy of that?
Yeah, I can show you who you call.
Who you call out, and how you do it?
Yeah, who you call out, I show you what I do though. If I've got a cook that says their dishwasher's down, whoever I talk to that tells me that they can get here the fastest, that's who I go with. You're just like the statewide with this refrigerator. Like, I've got a, a, a refrigeration guy that does work in Upshur County that also worked for me. He put our refrigeration in up at the high school. Uh, Commercial Kitchens couldn't get it in fast enough. You know, you, each of these vendors will have a connection with how you get your equipment. Like, they, they operate with certain companies that make certain kinds of equipment.
They're dealers.
They're dealers. So what happens is, when you have companies that are dealers, they end up asking more for companies that aren't dealers. So it's just a, a balancing game, but it's hard.
Well, this, this Electrolux thing, I mean, some of what we've found is with our location, I don't know if there are any vendors that deal with it in Pennsylvania.
It's only statewide, if statewide is in Charleston, it takes weeks for me to get them to come.
But I mean, they, have you looked in Pennsylvania or in Ohio?
The closest is statewide.
Well, I mean, that doesn't always matter.
It does when you're charged, you're being charged by the hour for them to come, okay?
Well, but if you're waiting on them to come, you might be able to. I mean, Charleston's two hours away from here, you can be in Pittsburgh in two hours, you can be pretty well in.
Well, there's a statewide in Fairmont, and there's a state, it depends on who's quickest, which direction they'll come.
And, and, and that, that was my point, uh, Mrs. Nelson Root, I mean, any company, I don't care who it is, whether them or whoever that says, hey, I'm gonna get this, you know, I'll just start charging this, 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 and the price starts going up, you see what I'm saying?
And I think part of that is, I mean.
To where if you had like a rotation, what I'm saying?
Yeah, it's hard to do a rotation, I mean, I'm just gonna be honest with you, that's super hard to do. I've done this for a lot of years, and if, what happened before is you all were doing a rotation and mostly using the same person, and we were getting stuff that we're now fixing, that was so many years ago old. So I guess, as a child nutrition director, you make in your mind who you know you think you can trust, if it's under a certain amount. If we have a certain amount of money, I go to Jill or Dr. Lewis and say, listen, it's gonna cost us two thousand dollars to fix something or to buy a new one. If it's something that's over five thousand, we get three quotes every time. Okay, that, now, as far as working on things go, we could have, like today, we had the oven problem at the high school, we've got a leak at the dishwasher. Today, I called, and by the afternoon, we had people in the county working on it. So I was hoping to have the dishwasher leak fixed by in the morning for the middle school, and they're working, I, I keep getting alerts on the phone, and they're working on the cooler at the high school. So I will do my best to try to spread everything out. I just, some days you get, you get, imagine maintenance, cause maintenance doesn't do anything for child nutrition. They only work on the building, so we got six.
Is there anybody in Lewis County that does this kinda work?
Not that I, not that I know of that will come, you know? That's the problem, you know? And it takes a long time for these guys to get good at this, a long time. Cause like, so the statewide guy came, he said it couldn't be fixed. We have a problem with one of the pass-through ovens at the high school. The statewide came and looked at it, they said there was no fixing it, they wanted me to buy a thirty or forty thousand dollar new thing, okay? I have Commercial Kitchens, West Virginia go, he looks at it and says, I think I can put a thermostat in that top oven, we can calibrate it this way, and we'll see what we can get going. To me, I was like, that's fine, I don't have thirty thousand dollars to spend today, but that other company wasn't gonna tell me that. Okay, that, that's where I get, so, um. Now, I can tell you, we, we're trying to look for other people, every county is, okay? Lots of counties, um, are looking for people that they pay as part of maintenance, that come in to do the, um, refrigeration, for instance, that's big money. You know, anytime we have to have this refrigeration stuff done, the HVAC stuff, um, those are pretty expensive. And lot, and there's several counties that are trying to get a, um, a person that works for their county. And when I worked, where I worked before, we had a person that just did HVAC, but it was for the whole county, and they did, it was under contract, so he did schools, he did kitchen stuff and air conditioner stuff, you know? So that's hard, because that's stuff you wait on a long time for too.
Well, yeah, and then, I don't know much about what we have set up, but the, some of the freon stuff, they're no longer making, so.
Oh, yeah, and some of the equipment we have, you can no longer buy the freon that's supposed to go in them to make it work. So that's why I was so appreciative when we got some ESRC money, and some of that money could be used on refrigeration. It could be used, cause we're trying to now feed. It could be used because we're trying to now feed all these kids. We were able to use some of these things you're seeing listed on here when it's talking about refrigeration. That is kind of what we used to be hit it hard while we had a chance to replace some of this equipment. Most of it, a lot of this equipment is from 1985, 1982. So we've replaced a lot. Middle school two-door freezer, a new steamer, new proofing cabinet. The proofing cabinet, these are kinds of things that I didn't know, but like the proofing cabinet, it keeps shorting out, okay? So they keep calling and telling me that it's not working, okay? Well, what happens is we have a lot of power surges at the middle school. And if you know anything about electricity, my dad was in electricity. When you start having power surges, it shorts things out, or it rushes a surge of power. I really believe that some of my issues that I'm having with some of that equipment, at least over there, is related to surges. Because it flickers all the time. And like when he, when the commercial kitchens went in to look at it, he showed me where it was burnt. And that then after we had the big storm. You know, and the average cook doesn't understand that part, and I don't try to go into it all because you can't. Do you know what I mean? So, but we're trying. I have a work order put in to say, can we have the right kind of things in the kitchen? You know, the electricity in the kitchen. But at the middle school, that's going to be hugely expensive. The high school, we've got garbage disposal for the three-bowl sink. And the dishwasher garbage disposal is on order. We got a booster heater for the dishwasher, and that was like so old. We got a planetary mixer, a walk-in cooler, a new evaporator unit. And we are still backordered on a salad bar that I've been trying to get. We ordered it last year. We put a new condensing unit in the walk-in cooler and the freezer here. So I just wanted to give you an idea of some of the new equipment that we've tried to get. Oh, we also purchased, and I'm so glad we did this, that's an iPad. So the point of service, which is why I told you about that a minute ago. Every school now has iPads. We used to have the big old clunky machines that the kids, somebody would sit there and have to punch numbers. We ordered iPads for every school. So now every school takes their lunch count on an iPad. So at the high school, we had the kids punch their numbers, but it still feeds into this. At the elementary school, a person has an iPad. Now, we're working some kinks out of this right now, but once this gets settled in, that's, they're already saying how great it is. And we got the plastic covers like this shows because we don't want people dropping them. But that's how we're taking count now. We've had some cook training and information, offer versus serve, I've already explained that. Meeting the grade requirements. We've had a lot of people fussing about, oh, they don't like the bread we're making, right? Or they don't like the flour we use. So we had a training where the cooks came in. And I called different counties and we had a recipe from all these different counties. And the cooks made different kinds of bread based on those recipes. I gave you the menu packet. Our vendors, our Gordon Food Service, United Dairy, Cook Brothers, those are the big ones. I've already shown them the guidelines for meals. Okay, USDA food. Some people have wrongly in their mind that anything we get from USDA is like free government commodities, not true. Everything we get from USDA, we still pay for. I don't want to get any more of the processed because basically Gordon's is cheaper than what I'm buying the USDA for right now. Not counting what the cost to deliver. But processed items, most child nutrition directors say, I quit it. Because you get it cheaper from Gordon's, it's straight to your door, you know? So you have two different things you could order from USDA, commodities and processed. The commodities are stuff that, they've not had a lot of adulteration or a lot of cooking. There's only usually one, like green beans, you see what I mean, or corn. It's hard to balance where you're ordering this from. This is probably one of the most difficult parts of my job is to figure out how to balance budget, figuring out where you're getting everything from. Very difficult. This is when we did the flour recipes at the middle school. And you see, they made pepperoni rolls, they made cinnamon rolls. We tried different kinds of dough. And if you see over here, there was actually a scale there, which is what you're supposed to do. You measure out the size because how do I give a calorie count to a parent of a special dietary, a new special dietary needs student? If I can't standardize what it is we're serving, you know? So the other cooks were like, well, we never use a scale. The middle school always uses a scale. So now I've got the other kitchens doing that, so then they can be more consistent on what they're serving. But it's things that's going to just take us a while getting back, no COVID, trying to learn and do. There's more of them cooking. And they really had a good time, you know? They were all grumpy and everything, and then they started having a good time and we all learned a lot. Now, we try to focus on Lewis County High School. First of all, I've got to say this about the high school. We need to take our hats off to some of them because they had this SREB. They came in and they basically did a full survey of the high school, asking kids questions, asking teachers questions. And basically, it's kind of like you're getting the most in-depth review from all different angles. This Southern Regional Education Board. And I've got to say, the teachers and the administration, I think at first it was kind of like, I don't know. We made many changes at the high school based off of that. Like we changed the way that the kids needed to be able to see the counselors. That was one of the things they said with SREB. Well, you can't really make an appointment and you go there and there's not a thing, right? So now we've established, everybody's got to have hours. The kids need to know what your hours are if they need you. Because what happens, counselors get to doing a lot of other kinds of duties. We also put in the dean of students where we could have, because one of the big complaints were with, we had a lot of CTE programs, but we did not have clear pathways. You know what I'm saying? So when Johnny comes in as a freshman, he can look at something and say, if I take this, 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 and this. So we're trying to establish career pathways. And the high school's working very hard on that. That came out of SREB, we listened to the student feedback. On-track Contract, you've heard the spiel from Dustin, I'm sure. That has actually been a very good thing, you know? It's the way that they, if a kid's failing in the class, they have an offer, a second chance to make that up before the failure goes through. The climate at the school is really, really good. If you've ever walked up to the high school, I can feel it, they're just very laid back. It's not, I'm scared to be at school, or I don't like to be at school. These kids really seem okay with the administration, they seem okay with their teachers. Very few kids, like if they said, you think there's an adult at this school that would be there for you if you needed it? And that was, that was really scored high for the students. You know what I'm saying, from the student point of view? So we've got some good going on, we have some problems we're dealing with. Principal growth with curriculum. We have a long way to go, but I can tell you that the best thing we could have done was to bring in Education System Solutions. Another gentleman who'd been a principal at a high school, very similar to Lewis County High School, sorry, what I was thinking of. But anyway, very similar. And he is able, he works so well with those principals to set up professional learning time. And they've really tried to look at their schedule and figure out, not the teacher wants to teach this. Not, it's based on what the kids need. And that's an adjustment here for these students, or for these teachers too. Because what happens is if you've got 30 kids requesting this, right? We may have to have different sections, you see what I mean? And if you base it on student need, on these pathways, you see why we're trying to get it all lined out. We've got a long way to go, but they're sure giving it a good old try, I will say that. They went to the high schools that work conference this summer in Texas. It was wonderful to have the teachers go and watch them get, a lot of times, high school teachers don't get that camaraderie that you can get in an elementary school. So you had a group of people that went, that have now formed a committee to try to do certain things. And I just, that's growth, we didn't have that before, do you know what I mean? You had little pockets of it, but you didn't have administration with those pockets all working together. It's, we're kind of getting in a rhythm, sort of, we're trying. APL, we had a training for APL with the high school. What we found at the high school was we needed to make sure that things were bell-to-bell. Instead of kids getting to come to class late or get out of class early. APL is basically, we trained the teachers at the high school, I think at the middle school, on what is your student? Because a lot of times it comes down to classroom management of a teacher. So they started out this year with a bunch of different new guidelines. And the principals talked to the teachers. And some of them work, some of them they're working it out to do it different because of feedback of teachers. But I'm pretty impressed with that. Now, we do have a long way to go. I will say that because we had high test scores, which I'm so proud of them for, what we really need to work on, like the dropout rate. And the attendance, that's huge, because that really kills us at the high school level, is that attendance. Dustin wanted me to, I asked Dustin, do you have any figures on this year's, what's called that, On-Track Contract? Last year, there were 193, at this time last year, they had 193 students with 674 Fs. Because you know how a kid can have more than one class, right? That's what they had at this time. This time this year, they had 221 students participate in it. With 522 Fs. So we've got the number of Fs down, do you see what I mean? Because I think if nothing else, it's set an idea among the teachers and the students that there's responsibility on both sides on getting kids to be successful in class. Career technical education. You will see here, I don't have the student numbers with the new Wevis. Dustin was trying to get them for me this week. We are still, and he said the numbers that he pulled off of what they had locally was wrong. I can get you updated numbers for each of those programs once they fix that. But as you can see, we have Agribusiness Systems. Speaking of Adrienne McPhillips, I really want to focus on her because she grew into the ag. And we kind of held off what we're doing with ag because we knew the person was probably going to leave, they told us that. So we kind of held back, I did, thinking, you've got to wait till who you get in there and see what they want to do. Because they're the teacher. So we talked to this girl, Dr. Lewis and I went, and we looked at the barn. And it needed to have a good access to it, so we've already got gravel up to the thing. And I thought she'd put it all the way up there, but Dustin told me she was going to meet with her tomorrow to verify exactly what we want to get. But she wants electric and water. I have asked Missy and I have not heard anything back yet from the electric. She, I asked her right before she left, I said, what is this? Because I knew I'd be doing this, and she said she hadn't heard back anything yet. Baking and pastry, that's new for Lewis County. We used to do Pro Start. It's very difficult to get Pro Start teachers certified. It's a much more different, difficult process than when I taught Pro Start. So we have baking and pastry, which gets to include a lot more students, okay? And it kind of overlaps with some other programs and helping us make those connections. We have something new that we added was career and work skills training. And that is something that's very good that Kristi Turner does, that gets some kids out and working. I want to see that grow, and she's done such a great job with what she's doing with that stuff. Energy and Power is Kevin Brown. We've got to see which direction he wants to go. Usually this time of year, they kind of make a plan about what it is they want. And they start sending me what it is that they would like. I'll show you in a minute what I'm trying to focus on. Hospitality and tourism, we have a new girl, she's really cute, Carly Hammer. She's so sweet, she emailed me the other day, she wants to take kids on field trips. She's trying to figure out how does she raise money? So I'm supposed to meet with her later this week. Law of Public Safety, he does a bang-up job, Mr. Parks does. He takes, is he still in here? He takes a whole lot of students, okay? And they seem to love the class. We do have to give him a room designated, or a place designated, so he can do his crime scene investigation. They set up like a crime scene so that, and then he can buy stuff that lets kids see what that law enforcement type of stuff might be. And did you talk to Dustin about that?
Yeah, I talked to him all the time.
Where are we at with that?
Just talking about rooms.
Well, I thought he's, I talked to him and he said that there was something that you and him had worked out. We have an extra room that has all the graduation stuff in it, okay? So now we're trying to figure out what to do with that. No, I needed to know that because I got the impression that maybe you all had a plan already?
I don't know, last week was so screwed up, I was running.
But we got to focus on him. That is a new thing that we've started in the county, so that's where some of the money's got to go, is to help him get set up. Pro Start, we're phasing that out. And Pro Start, we're trying to get the completers through so that we can get a count of those students. So we still have, now at the middle school, we have Grace Harris and Thomas Akers. Thomas Akers, he also teaches a course that's high school credit. So we moved some of the business classes, at least one down to the middle school, in Thomas Akers. And I was real proud, we had several teachers go to a CTE-type conference just a week ago. So overall, we have nine CTE teachers, and that includes Thomas Akers. Grace Harris is not an official CTE teacher, but she feeds in with the food-type program. I'm almost done. Here's what I've worked on to see what do we want to focus on on CTE. We got, I want to put my focus on the new instructors. We have to focus on the new programs. I don't know that we'll need a whole lot for baking and pastry, but we have to get the parameters around that to match the states. I want to update the barn for the ag students. You can tell this, this girl's got a lot of energy and I'm trying to catch it while we've got some energy there. Because we could build that up and that could be so nice, the kids could show animals, do stuff like that. So anyway, we're trying. Law of Public Safety, you see, I wrote crime scene area, that is on my, you know, where are we going to go with that? Tourism, there's a new young teacher in tourism. She's full of energy, but you know, I'm going to try to steer her the right way. And Dustin is actually the CTE principal at the school. So pretty much, I'm trying to train him to go through Dustin because he's the one that can make the decisions at the high school, like where this room goes. You see what I mean? So, and that CWST, I want to see if Kristi, she's really spent a lot of money in the past year or so with those business classes, getting those up and ready. But the CWST might be some, you know, I want to see what she needs to get that a little bit bigger. I've looked into another couple options. I think we're at a spot right now where our money is given to us based on the number of students that we have in these programs. So right now, we're a little thin in some areas since we've switched things around. We got less money because it's based on the number of students that you actually have that can participate. Then it is based on the number of students that you have in CTE compared to the whole school number. They use a whole calculation for that for the state, and that changed recently. That's different than it had then. Finally, I just want to take our, I think we should take our hats off to like the cooks. And the guys at the high school and those teachers at the high school. and the guys at the high school and those teachers at the high school that are really stepping up. I just think every day, these people just make school happen. And we forget all these little details, you know? And that's what I wanted to show you, the details that go into our decision-making. Is there, are there any questions?
Yes ma'am, I have a question. It's everything to do with the budget. Could you give us a little bit inside of what your present budget looks like?
I can tell you, I don't have the, I don't have the new budget in yet because we're still finishing out 2021. I can tell you that I have a pretty decent amount of money left over. Each thing, let me show you what I'm, here is the CTE finance guide. This will tell, this shows me, oh, I need to escape so you all can see it.
He can't see it.
He can't see it.
Oh, anyway. I, I can send this.
It's going to be good, just whenever I.
I can show you that. And I actually have a file that shows every penny we spent in CTE under each line item that we have. We got to get to spending our money this year, but again, we want to put it on the, you know, we got to, we got to focus on the areas where we got new people. But there are rules that apply to every one of those grants. Like I don't think, it's so funny, the principals and they all are taking this class. And I said, well now, you understand that Perkins is to be focused on the new programs, that Perkins money. And they said to me, you know, I didn't even realize that. That was Dustin. He goes, I didn't even realize that, okay? So sometimes people give the impression I can spend the money on whatever. But this group that we got, there's not going to be any problem having them spend the money, I don't believe.
Okay.
Thank you.
Sorry if that is long, but I wanted to. I'm mad at you all were yawning.
It's ugly.
How long did that take off?
An hour.
Ten minutes.
Why don't you tell me just not, I said, can I make it short? And you said, don't, just make sure you say everything you do.
See, look at the clock.
Well, I'm sorry.
Actually, the clock's an hour fast.
Yeah. Okay. Shuttle, yeah, I'll turn, I'll turn.
Whoops, don't fall there. Next on our agenda is the shuttle report for October, and that's page 24 in our packet. So it looks like our utilization rate has increased.
Cold weather, don't start riding buses. Maybe. For different sports, maybe.
Okay. All right. Superintendent's updates.
Yeah, in your folder, your red folder, we got a memo I sent. And it said, well, in the watch list for ELA. Now, there is progress. And Mr. Tid has the PowerPoint that he shared that we're improving, but it's not enough. That's up to you guys if you want to see it again.
No, we saw it.
And this math, attendance, we're working on. On-track to graduate, Mrs. Smithen got a small grant. And we have other money to help with the graduation. And then you see finance. Now, personnel, we are off that. They told us we were 56% and it's actually 92. And you have to be at 80. And that was an error.
On the stage part.
Yes. And I could go on, and Mr. Tid, okay? But I think you. Okay.
So the ELA achievement and the math achievement.
And Mr. Tid.
And, and what, is that for every grade? Is that for certain locations? Is that?
Under the reports you guys got there, the, it doesn't specify what grades. But if you remember the report I gave, we showed, we showed improvement in our county. But there was a slide that I had in there that still shows we're behind the state a pretty long ways. And I think that's what's pinging us on, is the ELA and the math deficiencies. And that's their two big topic, two big content areas they test. So they just hit us on both of those, saying, we didn't make enough growth. We made growth, but not enough to meet where the state wants us to be. Which we all agree, we need to be where the state is, if not higher. So we're all, you know, on board to make sure that's going to happen. But last year, we had growth, but not enough. So we're progressing, we're moving forward.
And Roanoke was identified.
Yeah, they were specifically identified.
And then attendance, where it says 44.5%. I didn't follow these percentages exactly.
I didn't look at that report as closely as Dr. Lewis had. Mr. Eckler's the attendance, I'm not sure how many it's about.
Okay.
Surely 44% is not our actual.
Graduation, we need to be in the 92. And we're at 87. And attendance. Yeah, that's what they're saying, which I believe is a Weavis. Just like, you know how they did to personnel? We've questioned all this and they haven't got back to us.
Yeah.
Real quick was when it said personnel and.
With the, with the Weavis 2.0 change, it's not only affecting us, it's affecting the people that are reading the reports from Weavis. So it's affecting their own departments down there too. Not, not to blame them, but they're still understanding how to read the reports, understanding how to pull that data that they need. But 44% does not sound accurate.
That is not.
That doesn't, there's no way that's.
And we, we questioned that. And now the graduation rate does seem, we knew that we were under. We need to be 93, 92.93. And we're at 87. But the attendance, I questioned that also. And then I asked what grade level with ELA and math. And I haven't, they're going to meet with us and tell us. I'll share that.
Yeah, because I know with personnel, they had a low score. And then when, when we checked with the state.
I was just getting on a phone call and they said, oh.
We read it wrong, yeah.
Yeah, so like, like I said, Weavis is affecting all of us, including themselves.
Yeah.
So, okay, thank you.
Another executive session.
Yes.
All right, let me find my cheat sheet here.
Do you have another one? Not what you, yes, you do.
Okay. I am requesting an executive session to discuss a facilities director position. Do I have a motion to go into executive session under West Virginia Code 6984 to discuss a facilities director position?
I'll make a motion.
Motion by Kenny. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Dave. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Have them leave.
Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
But motion carries five zero, the time is ten fourteen. But the records show that no action was taken in executive session. We will revisit the posting for a facilities director in January. Mr. Holden, Mr. Gissy, is it all right if we do it at the second meeting in January? Because they'll be putting out W two's and all that stuff the early part of January.
I'd say yes.
Okay, all right, so that's the January twenty third budget. Board comments. Mr. Holden.
Uh, yeah, uh, I don't know if this is an oversight or what happened, but I know we've, we, uh, we've recognized a lot of, uh, good students and everything, and, but we forgot one person, and I brought this up before, the band.
And Mr. Holden?
The band has done extremely well, and it has done, uh, several, several, uh, uh, what do you call them, uh, when they...
Competitions.
Competitions, that's what I'm looking for, several competitions that they, they got...
Mr. Heath requested that we not recognize until we were at the high school for the LSU meeting.
Kim emailed him.
Well, nobody told me that, I mean, that's why I'm asking.
That's what I'm...
Okay. All right, uh, shuttle pay for the shuttle buses. Uh, I asked if this would be put on the agenda, and it wasn't, so I'm asking why it was not put on there to talk about this.
We have a... There was, we talked about the shuttle report when I said that the shuttle had, um, been utilized more. I would have expected then that that's something would have been said.
Well, I mean, I, I'd like this put on to, to where we can go in, uh, because it concerns people's pay, so...
We pay eighteen jars an hour.
Well, I'm talking about hours, Mrs. Lewis, I'm talking about show up hours as opposed to paying the full two hours if there's nobody that rides, or just things like that, Jerry, you, can you chime in on this here, or what do you think ought to be done with that?
If, if you will, I've got two opinions, and if you're going to ask me, I'd like to give both of them.
Okay.
As a taxpayer, since I've been in this for a long time, I understand the concerns with the drivers and the talks that I've had with people that are talking about the levy already. As this show run was designed, or started back in, I think, nineteen sixty six, and it was a guarantee to the community that we would always offer transportation. Many times over the years, it has been discussed through board with the participation or lack of participation in it. It was put in there, and we're staying with the, if there was five, there had to be five. But then the discussion came up, and what happened was they realized that they had offered this to the citizens by doing away with consolidating the high schools, that they would always provide that transportation, and it didn't matter if there was five kids, twenty kids, or one kid, that must have run in that area. That's what it was designed for, so we've had that discussion many times in years. And so they never adhered to the less than five position, or less than five students we did away with that run. We never held to that. Then, when they were there for a while, it was different runs, paid different, there were a couple runs that paid an hour, a couple that paid two hours, or whatever, depending on where they were. That didn't work out too well as far as fairness either, so they changed that to where it was a two-hour per run. And so the, on that side, looking at it, the levy has passed, and it's just one use of it, but that money is designated for that, for the shuttle.
Can I...
And let me know.
Yeah, and then I'll correct you.
I'm, I'm all for the discussion. So the concern is, what are you going to do with that money if it's not used for service? You know, where's the fairness and that, uh, everything? So now, on the other side, as a businessperson, I understand fully, why should you pay somebody if they're not doing a job out there? They come out, come out and pay when they routinely don't have some, I get that a hundred percent. So, again, and I hate to keep beating this horse, but it, it comes into play over and over. Two thousand fourteen, we had this settled, uh, that, and it would settle so many more problems right now. We have our pay issues, and how to calculate our pay. We had it settled that we would pay for the actual time to do that. Meaning that if you was only there to pre-trick a bus, show up out there, and then you didn't have any kids and you go back home, you might only get an hour, that's what we did pay. So that would cut that down in half for every run that didn't have kids. But then also on that, we also had it thrown in half, we were giving up the two hours to do it for extra time driven. Then, in doing that, the trade off was to go to the hourly rate, like we had agreed on in two thousand fourteen. And again, there's another segment for the county, because the senior drivers get those runs, and so you're paying the top guy every time he drives. But every time he doesn't drive, instead of a flat rate across the board, you might get a substitute that might be twelve dollars a night. So every time that driver took off, again, an additional segment for the county was going to be realized. So that was agreed too, we had that set. Then, in the process of this, and we've looked at it and tried before with having sign up sheets. It didn't work before, perfect example for that is tonight. We had one driver, we were told we had kids at, um, the middle school, so we only had one driver sent out there. That's the policy we're wanting to have. That driver gets a phone call, says, hey, we got four kids up to high school. His kids, so now what are we going to do? We got four kids...
Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries five zero, the time is ten fourteen, but the records show that no action was taken in executive session. We will revisit the posting for a facilities director in January. Mr. Holden, Mr. Gissy, is it all right if we do it at the second meeting in January because they'll be putting out W two's and all that stuff the early part of January?
I'd say yes.
Okay, all right, so that's the January twenty-third budget. Board comments, Mr. Holden.
Uh, yeah, uh, I don't know if this is an oversight or what happened, but I know we've, we, we've recognized a lot of, of good students and everything. And, but we forgot one person, and I brought this up before, the band.
And Mr. Holden?
The band has done extremely well, and it has done several, several, uh, what do you call them? When they competitions, competition, that's what I'm looking for, several competitions that they, they got.
Mr. Heath requested that we not recognize until we were at the high school for the O S I.
Yeah, Kim emailed him.
Well, nobody told me that, I mean, that's why I'm asking.
That's what I'm.
Okay, all right, shuttle pay for the shuttle buses. I asked if this be put on the agenda, and it wasn't, so I'm asking why it was not put on there to talk about this.
There was, we talked about the shuttle report when I said that the shuttle had been utilized more, I would have expected then that that's something would have been said.
Well, I mean, I, I'd like it to put on to, to where we can go in, because it concerns people's pay, so.
We pay eighteen dollars an hour.
Well, I'm talking about hours, Mrs. Lewis, I'm talking about show up hours as opposed to paying the full two hours if there's nobody that rides, or just things like that. Jerry, you, can you chime in on this here, or what you think ought to be done with that?
If you want, I've got two opinions, and if you're going to ask me, I'd like to give both of them.
Okay.
As a taxpayer, I've been in this for a long time, I understand the concerns of the drivers and the talks that I've had with people that are talking about the levy already. As, as this shuttle run was designed, or started back in, I think nineteen sixty-six, and it was a guarantee to the, the community that we would always offer transportation. Many times over the years, it has been discussed through board with the participation or lack of participation in it. It was put in there, I understand with the, if there was five, there had to be five, but then the discussion came up, and what happened was they realized that they had offered this to the citizens by doing away with consolidating the high schools, that they would always provide that transportation, and it didn't matter if there was five kids, twenty kids, or one kid, that must have run in that area. That's what it was designed for, so we've had that discussion many times over the years, and so they never adhered to the less than five position, or less than five students we did away with that run, we never held to them. Then, when they were there for a while, it was different runs, paid different, there were a couple runs that paid an hour, a couple that paid two hours, or whatever, depending on where they were. That didn't work out too well as far as fairness either, so they changed that to where it was a two hour for each run. And so the, on that side, looking at it, the levy has passed, but one, just one piece of it, but that money is designated for that, for the shuttle.
Yeah, and then I'll correct you.
I'm, I'm all for the discussion. So the concern is, what are you going to do with that money if it's not used for travel, you know, where's the fairness in that, and everything? So now, on the other side, as a business person, I understand fully, why shouldn't you pay somebody if they're not doing a job out there, come out, come out and pay when they routinely don't have? I get that a hundred percent. So, again, and I hate to keep beating the course, but it, it comes into play over and over. Two thousand fourteen, we had this settled, uh, debt, and it would settle so many more problems right now, we have our pay issues of how to calculate our pay. We had it settled that we would pay for the actual time to do that, meaning that if he's only there to pre-trick a bus, show up out there, and then if you didn't have any kids and you go back home, you might only get an hour. That's what we did pay him, so that would cut that down in half for every run that didn't have kids. But then also on that, we also had it, doing that, we were giving up the two hours to do it for extra time driven. Then, in doing that, the trade-off was to go to the hourly rate, like we had agreed on in two thousand fourteen. And again, there's another segment for the county, because the senior drivers get those runs, and so you're paying the top guy every time he drives. But every time he doesn't drive, instead of a flat rate across the board, you might get a substitute that might be twelve dollars. So every time that driver took off, again, an additional segment for county was going to be realized. So that was agreed too, we had that set, and then in the process of this, and we've looked at and tried before with having sign-ups, it didn't work before. Perfect example for that is tonight, we had one driver, we were told we had kids at the middle school, so we only had one driver sent out there, that's the policy we're wanting to have. That driver gets a phone call, says, hey, we got four kids up to high school, his kids, so now what are we going to do? We got four kids sent to high school this evening that didn't have a shuttle bus, they were expected. This is exactly what we said was going to happen, and it will continue to happen, no matter how much awareness we put out, no matter how many flyers, no matter how many times we tell the kids, they're not going to be thinking about doing that. And then you have the human element of the secretary to get that message, translate it down, if, even if they got it, you know, there's going to be that thing. So that's where I had the problem with that, and I knew it wouldn't take very long for this. Then on another one, we, we had a substitute driver at the, at his school, and he overheard a teacher telling a student that, no, we don't have the shuttle run anymore. So where the miscommunication is, I don't understand, but that's what's going to continue to happen. Again, the best solution that I can see is instead of doing the call-out system to try to see which buses we need any evening, to send those buses, we've got the money, but it's covered in the levy, at least for this levy, which will be up in two thousand twenty-four. We, we send their drivers out there, and maybe they'll only get one hour. I guarantee I can get a driver to do that, and that way you eliminate the call-out system, and the drivers go out there, they don't have any kids, they go back, they cut their time in half. So those are the kind of things that consider when doing that. So I can tell you, I can see it from a business, I can also see if we're the taxpayer, just saying that we want to dis-sell it, we want to.
Okay, I want to correct you with the levy call that was a special election on February eighth, two thousand twenty. It's very clearly provide and support extracurricular and curricular on academic transport for students pre-K through K. It doesn't say specifically shuttle anywhere in this levy. Second point, we've only did this, how many weeks with the call? Huh? Okay, so let's give it, how many times did we have kids that didn't have a shuttle in the last two weeks?
I don't know.
One today is what you reported.
That's the only one I know.
That's correct, and, and I've checked with Brian and Martin, and we'll do it again. The third thing is, do we not have an agreement if a driver shows up, they get two hours, and they could file a grievance?
Well, there is a show call, in my understanding, past thirty years, that was implemented so that, like, there's an extra duty trip, you're getting called out. That's a difference from a contracted position, because these contracted positions can be one hour, two hour, times have all different kinds of us. And so the difference was, whenever I get called out, or I put bid in to take a field trip, to take a basketball game, and I show up, and, and this happens.
And have to give up your evening run.
Give up the evening run.
Right.
So it was guaranteed to get two hours to do that for showing up, and then you get the next baseball trip, and then it might be a lot less, it could be a better, if you don't know. That's why that was put in place, it was not intended, to my knowledge, for the shuttle, but, but because we use it for that, that's what they did. Kind of like it, put that in with that too, but I, I feel certain that we can do it that way, you know, that's, that's your option, we're going to do what's said.
You know, you know, as far as, I mean, it has picked up some, has it not?
No, sir, I mean, we have the report, we didn't start this until November, the report says October thirty-first, we need some more data.
Well, I mean, we've got, you've got basketball coming up.
And, and because we have basketball, girls, boys, there's actually less because of gym time, you know, the, the girls might do it right after school, and then the boys, they switch off. You're talking smaller teams, not like a football and soccer. I think we need to give it another month and look at the data and see if there's a need.
Well, and the runs have not been eliminated.
No, they are not.
They just, the kids just have to sign up for them, for the bus to be there to take them.
Yes, they can write a note, the parents, they can call, and we've put that out there.
What happens if, like, this evening, if there's four kids up there running a shuttle bus, and there's none there, what do we do?
The coach needs to stay and call their parents, but hopefully, I'd like to know what happened, did the coach, when they met, say, hey, if you need a bus, you have to call, you know, I'd like to know. And I'll check into it.
Yeah, what time did we find out that they needed a shuttle bus, at the end of practice?
I assume that's what.
Huh, five thirty?
Yeah.
I was sitting here.
Yeah.
I think we need to make sure they have the information.
Well, I mean, and we've only been doing this since the first of November, this is day eight, so I don't know that that's.
Well, I think until we see what it's going to do, I think, I still think these drivers need paid, you know, a little something, you know, if they don't run, Jerry, can you talk to them, or will you talk to them, or see what we can figure out on?
Well, we don't.
And then there is one other issue, that same issue that came up tonight, those students were in wrestling, and they told this driver that they didn't get out of wrestling until five fifty-five, that puts the damper on, or starting this at five thirty. So can we go back and change that as well?
Well, if we have sign-ups, I'm sure the coach could let them out, we need to work out those, you know, because we did have it at five forty-five, and, and with your suggestion, we moved it back, we need to check with the sports.
But, but I understand what Jerry's saying, though, Mrs. Lewis, if, some of these kids just plain forget to, to sign up, and, and, and some of them, that may be their only way home, so.
Well, I think we, I need to make sure that the co, the athletic director and the coaches talk to the kids and say, it's your responsibility. It's just like you show up for basketball, you need to bring your shoes, you know, I've had many complaints I've logged in of our empty buses wasting taxpayer money. So, you know, I, I want to give it a chance, I, you know, high school kids, I would think they would be responsible to say, I need to run.
We're talking about middle school kids too at this point, we're talking about sixth graders.
And their parents, I would think they would know, hey, I'm not going to be able to pick them up.
Fifteen, sixteen, some of them could stay for after school tutoring or, or whatever. I think we need to leave these buses running until we absolutely for a hundred percent, you know, go a couple months, but I think we need to keep things where they are and keep these buses running. For the simple fact is, if a kid, you know, needs it, they've got it, and that's what we.
We've been running it for four years with zero, with reports of zero.
And the kids, if the kids sign up, the bus will be there.
Well, I think, I disagree with both of you, I think we need to, to keep this running, if, you know, what, what if first kid needs to ride on?
Then the, the coach will be there to do whatever, and probably it only take one time.
That's not the coach's job to take them on.
Yeah.
But, but, but I think, I, I think we do need to think about, you know, till, till we absolutely a hundred percent see what's going on, and a, a month or two, I think we need to leave things where they are and make sure that if a kid needs to ride home, they've got it, just what we told the people we would do in the levy, that's my opinion.
That's, that's what I'm saying, Mr. Holden, we haven't, haven't eliminated kids being on the bus if the kids have made the arrangements, or the parents have made the arrangements. We're only not sending buses if we don't have somebody that has said that they need to ride that bus.
Well, but a, as, as to what Jerry's saying, it happened this evening, there's four kids up there, no way home, and we had no way to, to, to go get them.
Well, let me check that out.
I mean, that's going to happen, it, Mrs. Lewis, I, I was a bus driver for thirteen and a half years, you can sit there and say all you want to, and I'm going to disagree with you. You can sit there and, and try to plan all you can, but it just, it just don't work out, I've seen it firsthand.
Well, I personally have coached at Lewis County High School track, and I would try to make my kids more responsible, you know, it's your.
And I guarantee you, you had kids that, that, that still miss, I mean, you can't, can you sit there and honestly tell me that, that you never had a kid that needed a shuttle bus? I don't think so, Mrs. Lewis, I'm sorry.
And didn't bring their uniform, then they.
I, I just don't, I don't believe that.
We don't have any action item on the agenda for this, this evening?
Well, I'd like to put that on there for next time, so we can discuss this further.
There would have to be three people wanting on there, yeah.
What's that?
There need to be three people.
Okay, I'm one of them, anybody else?
I want it on there.
Adam, you still there?
I don't, yeah, I would like to have it on there.
Okay, there's three of us.
All right, and what exactly do you want on there?
Uh, to discuss about the, the, the shuttle buses and keeping them running, and for a month or two to see what is going to happen, at least, at least till the first of the year, maybe around the twenty-fourth, I mean, after the first of the year, do we come back off of Christmas break?
Hold, hold on just a second, I'm sorry, Adam, I didn't hear you.
I, I think, the question I had was, and I, I may have misunderstood, was if a bus driver is called out, do they get two hours?
Yes.
That was the question.
Is that, Mike, is that correct?
Yes, that's, that's what's been in the past, is that correct, Jerry?
Mr. Holden is saying, yes, that is correct.
Is that correct, Jerry? Well, I mean, they got called out, they got two hours, I mean, that's what the, that's what the run calls for, I mean.
I wouldn't be fair to them, I think they called, they, they called.
Yeah, they do.
Yeah, they do.
But that, that's why I say this deal of, of signing up just ain't going to work, it's just not going to work. Now, I know you don't want to hear that, Mrs. Lewis, but it's just not going, it's just not going to work.
I don't think we've given it a fair enough chance, we've ran buses for four years, and they've had zero kids, we have data to show that, you get that monthly or you.
And there have been times that we've had kids, that's like this evening, that showed up.
We've always hauled if there's one kid, we've always taken.
Was that bus went and picked them four kids up this evening?
I need to investigate and see what.
Well, yes or no, don't give me this flubby, flubby.
We'll have it on.
Was that bus, I'm asking you, Mr. Lewis, was that bus picked them kids up this evening, Jerry, was that bus picked them four kids up? Okay, then, then, then the system failed this evening, correct?
One time, how about all the times that was zero?
Okay, one time, two times, how many times have we not known, Mrs. Lewis?
I will find that out.
I mean, you can sit there and tell me all you want to, but I just don't believe it.
Mr. Holden, we need to move on.
I, I just don't believe it.
What else is on your list?
Okay, so we do have that on, it's going to be on the agenda to talk about that the next time, correct?
No, we had three people ask this.
Okay, all right, I like to say one good thing, Peterson School out there, I like to give a, I was out there Thursday, they had the apple butter that they done out there, they had the apple cider that was done out there, and I watched the whole thing, it was very educational. I under, after that, there was, the Peterson School put on a, a, for the veterans, they, to, to honor the veterans, and they put a show on, the kids was very, very respectful, they was very polite, they showed respect to the veterans, they sung to them, they thanked them, I thought that was very nice, so, the Peterson and the staff is to be commended for that, I thought that was a very nice ceremony. Jane Lu School, the, according to a janitor, the seventeen inch of the floor scrubber got fixed, is that correct? Is that what was told the last time? Okay, but, but they still don't, they've only got one, and he said it works half the time, so I told him he needed to talk to the Jane Lu School principal to put in a, a request for a new one, if that could be looked into, there were evidently the mower at Peterson Central out there, it's got some age on it, maybe it needs looked into, they say it works half the time, if you could look into that. And there again, here we are with, still with a high fuel, cost of fuel tanks, and, and I know this has been a hot topic, but I still think we need to get fuel tanks, our own fuel tanks, that we could be saving several dollars, especially now, and it looks like it ain't going to get no better, so. But, that's all I have for this evening.
Okay, thank you.
All right.
All right, Adam?
Is, is Dave Fong still out there, or?
Yes.
I, I only had one something real quick, I, I haven't got to speak with him, how did his assessment of, of the simulator go? And Randall, I know that Mike said that there was a simulator and Fred Epple, but I'm pretty sure it's two different simulators, and I couldn't be wrong.
Yeah, it is.
To get his, his feedback from the trip.
Feedback from your.
Trip and Randall.
Oh, that's what Randolph told me, it was a really nice trip, got to go over there, got some new ideas about some, some things about the program, and of course, everybody works the program different, so it gives it a nice, gives you some options of the way to transfer things around, and I'm, I'm sorry, Mr. Gissy didn't hear you. Oh, the simulator, yeah, they have a simulator over there, it's pretty universal, the, the way they were doing the simulators, it's T I technology has, I think, all of West Virginia simulators done. And it's the, the law enforcement simulator, and they have scenarios where you deal with talking people down, and, and you, I mean, it's real live video in front of you, and the people are interacting with you from a, a program, and it's, it's really, it's really kind of neat, it gives people the perspective of being there, real life, and making a choice, and, and having to, everybody always second guesses, guesses the police when you're an armchair quarterback, that's easy to do, but when you're put in that situation, the pressure's up, and you realize that, you know, it's a little tougher making that decision when you're there hands-on, but it's something, something decent that would be good for the program at some point.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, Dave?
Just one thing, I, I was made aware of on social media, that a former bus driver in Lewis County School System who drove buses for about seventeen years, back in the, when I started teaching, back in the seventies, and Olin Klein passed away, and he hasn't lived in the area in a long time, but, but people who, who were around in the seventies and eighties remember Olin Klein. So I wish to send condolences to the family of Olin Klein, former bus driver.
Anything else? All right, I want to say thank you to you all for hanging in with us, it's been a long day, but it will be a short night, that's for sure, thank you. The date of our next meeting is on November the twenty-eighth at Robert L. Blain Middle School, we'll start with the Local School Improvement Council at five o'clock, I'm assuming that will be in the cafeteria as usual? Yes.
Is it Robert L. Blain?
Yes, uh-huh. Is there a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion.
Ken has moved, is there a second?
I'll second it.
Dave will second, all in favor?
Aye.
Yep, and the time is now.